Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the October 8, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 11, at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Thank you very much, and would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For your consent matters, items 1 through 35, I do need a motion to drop item number nine, introducing the ordinance amending Sacramento County Code, Chapter 6.99.265, Title VI, relating to limited service charitable feeding operation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll move to drop it, but I do have a question about it, or a comment, I should say. I know that during my briefing with the CEO on this matter, I was given some rationale for why we're dropping it today. I just want to make public mention of it today, that my interest in this coming back to us is to understand the nexus, especially between the impact that these growing instances of public feeding, as charitable and as well intentioned as they might be, what the nexus is to the impacts in terms of the cleanup that is required, oftentimes from those that are feeding the people that are hungry in our community. In my district, I know that, especially in the River District, we've had growing instances of mass feedings, in some cases that are leaving streets completely strewn with garbage and debris after these feedings. So that, to me, is going to be one of the things I want to see when we bring this back, is what is that connection in terms of the cost of addressing that, whether it be the cost associated with cleanup by the county or the city?
Chair will second and concur with those comments. We have a motion and a second to drop. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. For item 16, you are adopting an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.90, Sections 2.90.400 through 2.90.440 of the Sacramento County Code, relating to the home detention program and pretrial release supervision program. For item 22, you are introducing an ordinance repealing Chapter 6.90, Title VI, and amend Chapter 16.18, Title 16, of the Sacramento County Code relating to butane resale regulation. And you're going to waive reading on that and continue to October 22 for adoption. For item 58, this is a title correction. This is the Sacramento County Department of Waste Management and Recycling, contract number 4459, Kiefer Landfill, 2019, gas systems improvement, award of bid to Sierra National Construction. And that concludes my notes.
Okay, Mr. Serna.
Yes, thank you. I actually had comments on 16 and 22 as well.
If I can interrupt you, I'm going to ask that 16 be after the vote of the remainder of the consent, because we do have public comment on it.
Okay, terrific. You all see my comments after that public comment. With regards to item 22, I just want to make sure that this, Mr. CEO, is part and parcel of what was suggested, and I think concurred, by everyone on this board, I believe, the last meeting, with regards to having an agendized item that is informational about everything that the county is doing to try and reduce our jail population.
That's correct, yeah. It's coming next meeting, two weeks from today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, I wanted to speak to item 8, please.
No need to read entirety, just read that.
Item 8, authorize the Director of the Department of General Services to convey county-owned roadway, sidewalk, landscape, strip, and uneconomic remnant fee parcels in right-of-way of easements located within the unincorporated city boundaries to local municipalities, including those listed herein, and any that are subsequently identified.
Okay, thank you. I talked with Mr. Gill earlier this morning on this, and I support the transfer of the parcels that are outlined here, but the portion that I do take exception with is that any that are subsequently identified, I think it's important for this board to know in the event that other parcel identified in the future, whether it would be with the City of Sacramento, City of Ranch Cordova, or any other incorporated city, that we know what those parcels are. And I'll just, part of the issue is, is that some of these remnant parcels may be remnants, and it makes good sense, but adjacent to freeways, they do potentially make sites for electronic billboards, and I just think that we need to make sure that, and the transfer, irrespective of which jurisdiction they're in, that we at least get a chance to look at those parcels. So I would want to reserve the right for future actions that retains, remains with this board, rather than delegating the authority for subsequent parcels, so, but I'm okay with today's action, so.
Will do.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, I will ask that we take items 13 and 16 separately, so is there a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar?
Some.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Item 13.
Item 13, authority to execute a $0 memorandum of understanding with County of Yolo and execute a revenue agreement in the amount of $49,000 to participate in the data-driven recovery project to facilitate data sharing and coordination between the behavioral health and criminal justice systems.
And we do have Courtney Hanson.
My name is Courtney Hanson. As you know, I've been part of efforts here in the county to reduce the jail population and potentially, you know, support you all in moving in that direction, and raising concerns around projects currently moving through the pipes to potentially expand the Elk Grove, our CCC facility, and the downtown jail. And so we support very much, decarcerate Sacramento and the organizations that make it up, support the data-driven recovery project. And I just want to highlight kind of a contradiction and concern, that I know it will take 120 days, that's sort of the timeline, to have a charter, and then this data collection will continue, my understanding is, until 2021, which makes sense. It does take time to collect data and do it right. And the entire purpose of that seems to be to look into ways to concretely reduce the jail population, and really look at the intersections of how people with behavioral health needs, mental health needs, get tied up in the system, how to do non-carceral interventions that are more effective, cheaper, more humane. And so I wonder if this could be a reason to maybe slow down these jail expansion projects just a bit, because if we're not going to have that data until 2021, I know a big reason of justification for the Elk Grove expansion, for example, is to be able to make the jails suitable for people with severe psychological disorders, which I think really shouldn't be tied up in the carceral system to begin with. So just want to throw that out there. I'm curious what we could do to help support this effort as we move along with it, and maybe dig into that contradiction a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments of the board? If not, I will take a motion.
The item.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Item 16, please.
Item 16 is the ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.90, Sections 2.90.400 through 2.90.440 of the Sacramento County Code, relating to the home detention program and pretrial release supervision program.
And Ms. Hanson, I should have saved you the trip. Courtney Hanson.
Followed by Liz Blom.
My exercise, I always run down. If you don't notice, run back up. Gosh, I have a lot to say on this topic. I will keep it brief. I mean, there's so much to go into with Senate Bill 10, and I know this is a separate effort, but it's kind of related. We know that Senate Bill 10, ending cash bail, could potentially not go through because of the ballot referendum that's in the works. I was part of initially doing that push for ending cash bail, and while the headline looks really good that California is ending cash bail, because we know it's a classist system and extremely racially biased, this algorithm sort of system that it's being replaced with is really concerning. So I just want to point that out in case it's not on your radar. There is a broader and growing body of research that questions of validity, ethics, efficacy of pretrial risk assessments. So while money bail is based on class bias and racial bias, unfortunately, these algorithms are also based on kind of the status quo on a loop, which we know that the status quo in the criminal legal system is a tendency to funnel certain people in, poor people, black and brown people, people with mental health issues. And so I know all this money is being transferred, and this is already in the works, but pretrial services really belong with community-based organizations and experts, and shouldn't be part of sort of this carceral law enforcement wing. And there's models for that in San Francisco and elsewhere that perhaps we could be looking into. And I know this is also about home detention, and there's a growing body of research around what's being called e-carceration, and it's sort of a dangerous shift to actually grow the incarceration system in a more invisible way. There's so many people walking around with ankle monitors, and in home detention programs, I've been in one of those, it's extremely, it's criminalization, you're incarcerated, it keeps you out of work, it keeps you with barriers to housing, and those are also the criterias that allow people to enter those programs, is, you know, the sheriff can look into your employment history, your history as a resident. And so it's just, again, part of this cycle, and I'd really like to spend more time talking with you all about really moving in a different direction that I think the data tells us we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Liz Blom.
So the United States accounts for 4% of the global population, but 20% of the global pretrial jail population. This is a major issue. Current pretrial incarceration rates defy all historical norms. There are more legally innocent people behind bars in America today than there were convicted people in jails and prisons in 1980. While we want to decrease the reliance on cash bail, it could be eliminated tomorrow, and we would still have a pretrial system that is fundamentally unfair and puts too many people behind bars. We envision a system where at least 95% of people are released before trial, whether immediately after arrest or within 48 hours regardless of charge. The ACLU's goals in pretrial context are to, one, dramatically reduce pretrial detention, two, eliminate wealth-based detention, and to combat the bias and systemic racism of the system. We can do this through decriminalization and diversion efforts, strong due process protections, and expansion of the right to counsel during pretrial proceedings, and procedural reforms that adhere to constitutional principles and fundamental fairness. Algorithmic risk assessments should not play a role in pretrial systems. Data shows that these risk assessments do not decrease jail populations. We are aware that the Sheriff's Department already does a form of risk assessment, which is obviously not effective, further shown by the 9.6 million that was given to probation this year and not the sheriff, to carry out these pretrial release programs. We need community oversight boards to ensure that this money is actually decreasing jail populations, community boards that are represented by people in the community. According to the ACLU, not only do these tools not provide the specific individualization, individualized information required to justify limiting a person's pretrial liberty, but the underlying racial bias presented in the criminal justice data points makes it impossible to reconcile how existing tools operate with our vision of justice. The public safety assessment predicts that 92% of people that the algorithm flags for pretrial violence will not get arrested for a violent crime.
Can you wrap up, Liz?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So neither judges nor software can know in advance who and who will not show up for trial. Risk assessments do not work. They do not make our community safer, only a different and radical county budget will.
Thank you, Liz. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just, I know we can decide this before us, but on a related matter, is it still on the next meeting on 22 of October that we're going to see the our CCC contract for discussion?
That's our plan.
Okay, we're going to allow sufficient time for that discussion, I trust?
I would assume so.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thanks.
Supervisor Serna, did you have something?
I didn't.
No? Okay. Is there any other questions or comments of the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Chair will second. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Item 36.
Item 36 is the presentation of resolution recognizing October 2019 as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the Sacramento County.
Thank you, members of the board. As the clerk said, that this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the request was to come forward with just a resolution and no presentation, but many of us felt like this was something that was important enough, that needs to be spoken of here at the beginning of October. So I'll read a few of the "whereas's," if you'll indulge me. Whereas domestic violence is a serious widespread and hidden societal problem that affects 4 million women, children, and men in the United States each year, regardless of race, age, and income, and as many as 1 in 4 women are victims of domestic violence. Whereas abuse can have long-term damaging effects of the victims and their families, friends, and communities, and children who witness domestic violence often grow up believing that physical cruelty is normal and continue to perpetuate the cycle of violence. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to mourn those who have died due to domestic violence, and to celebrate those who have survived. Whereas the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center Collaborative provides victims and their families with a one-stop facility to report a crime, provide a complete statement taken by a detective or a trained child interviewer, get assistance to obtain a temporary restraining order, find safe housing, meet their prosecutor and victim's advocate to learn what will happen in court, and most importantly, find the support they need to keep them safe from falling back into the hands of the accused. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, does hereby recognize October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I think that those "whereas's" really point out to the fact that this is an issue that impacts all of us, and to simply sweep it away as something that just happens to a few is a mistake and inaccurate. So with that, Mr. Wagstaff, would you come and accept this resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for all the good work that's been done in the county?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And just thank the board for recognizing this important issue, and I'll be sure to get this proclamation to the Justice Center. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bruce.
Item 37 is the public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Vintage Park Estate subdivision within Zone 1 of the county service area number 1.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dorothy Codani, and I'm a senior civil engineer with the County Engineering Division, and I'm here to present the item as is just read into the record by the clerk of the board. The Vintage Park Estate subdivision is located on the south side of Vintage Park Drive, approximately 2,000 feet west of Bradshaw Road, and its tentative map proposes 81 residential lots. In response to entitlement conditions of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the benefit category change process for county service area number 1, which provides street and safety light services for the unincorporated portion of the county. Therefore, a notice and ballot were mailed to the property owner on August 23. This item proposes a change from the safety light-only category, which has an annual service charge of $2.56, to the enhanced street and safety light residential category with its annual service charge of $49.64. So unless there are any questions from the board, we recommend that you open the public hearing, consider all testimonies, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Any questions from the board? Okay, I have no public comments left, but I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone at this time that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing now, we will close the public hearing. Would the clerk please tabulate?
You've received one ballot. The legal owner is Roman Catholic Bishop of Sacramento, parcel number 1210110056. Site address is the Vintage Park Drive, Sacramento, California 95829. Voting yes.
Thank you.
With that, you have changes.
Thank you. And so since we have no majority protest, we request that the board adopt the attached resolution to approve the, as you said, the change for the Vintage Park Estate subdivision, and I can read into the record the fill-ins for the resolution. Starting with Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests, which the board finds and determines do not constitute a majority protest. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of the benefit category, and 0% was in opposition. Thank you.
Any other questions? And with that, chair will move staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Item 38, you are acting as the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento, announcement of Twin Rivers Redevelopment Project renaming and commencement of new construction.
Good morning, chair, supervisors. Thank you for having us speak. My name is Victoria Johnson. I'm a program manager with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I'm here with a good news announcement. The Twin Rivers, long known as Twin Rivers Project, is about to be renamed as the Marisol Village. And Marisol Village was selected through a community process, a discussion. The Marisol is, can be translated, Marisol can be translated as sunflower, hence the sunflower theme. So we're very excited by the new name. The property will include sunflowers, as well as many other natural species, California species, and pollinators throughout the overall site, the community garden, and the park. And we also, very, very happy to announce that since the last time we've been before you, we have secured the funding necessary to begin the residential construction. The infrastructure work will begin, we believe, in the month of November, and will be completed in the spring, and thereafter, the residential construction will begin on the first 123 units. So it's all good news. We are moving forward. Thank you on the consent agenda today, there was yet one more document which you approved with that agenda, and bit by bit, piece by piece, this project is coming to fruition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, congratulations to all of us, that we now have a name to go with the site. And I know that this has already been before the city council, this announcement, but I'm wondering, is there an opportunity for someone that doesn't claim to have a green thumb at all, but is there an opportunity to actually have incorporated into landscaping sunflowers?
Yes, indeed, sir. So sunflowers, as you know, are seasonal.
Well, I don't know, that's why I don't have a green thumb.
Okay, sunflowers are seasonal. Okay. They are planted in late winter, and they will bloom through the summer. And we have a .66-acre community garden, and we will, to the best of our ability, it will be a city-operated garden, but we will opine that we really want to see sunflowers seasonally blooming in that garden. It will be visible from Richards as you drive by, and that would be very appropriate.
And I assume the branding for anything associated with the project will mirror the logo on the upper left-hand corner there. Okay, very good. Again, congratulations. Thanks for all your tireless effort to get us this far. I know we're kind of in the process of going vertical now, bringing back the site, if you will. For those that have driven by recently, you've noticed that it's raised. I mean, there's really not much there, there's infrastructure going in. And I know it's a long-term project, but one that I think is really going to anchor that part of the city of Sacramento, the county of Sacramento, and certainly with the advent of a new light rail station that will serve it, it really is going to be something I think we can all be very proud of in the not-too-distant future. So thanks again.
And before Supervisor Natoli goes, I will say, LaShelle and Christine, your arms are looking tired, so feel free to. Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, I would just echo some of the comments by Supervisor Serna. Certainly, as this project has evolved over a number of years, I think it may get lost not in anybody here, but I just, the fact that tremendous undertaking that this, and challenge this has presented, I think that when you talk about an older complex that was occupied by folks, and in going through with this total reconstruction, and certainly the addition of the light rail station, tremendous amount of moving parts, and I want to just give credit certainly to leadership on this board and city council, but certainly to the agency and all the various partners. I know there are a lot of partners in this process, and I think, you know, to have a new name, obviously, to present, obviously, the, you know, the artist rendition of what it will look like when it's completed, gives, you know, a good idea, but all the in-between has been, you know, certainly a tremendous labor with a lot of folks, you know, working at different levels, but I want to just commend the agency, and again, all your partners, because I think when this is done, it'll be something for the ages. It'll be, you know, generationally, it'll provide housing for families and for people from different walks of life, but certainly those that may struggle in the realm of, you know, housing and having affordable housing. But all the amenities, and certainly the connectivity to jobs, through the transportation element here, and I think the fact that the work that's gone on with the Promise Zone and the various partners, it really will be, when it's completed, a tremendous accomplishment. And because it takes so long, sometimes people forget what it once was, I think, again, and what it will be, obviously, this is the future, and, again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. No other questions? Next item, please.
Item 39 is Senate Bill 2, Building Jobs and Homes Act, Year Two Funding Status and Recommendations.
Mr. Leonard.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Rob Leonard, Deputy County Executive for Municipal Services. Great, the PowerPoint is up. On September 24, the Board of Supervisors asked staff to report back on SB 2, specifically SB 2, Year Two Funding, and to discuss the status of SB 2, Year Two Funding, and also potential recommendations for the board to consider. So today, we bring forward to you a report with recommendations. I want to say that all matters related to SB 2, Year Two Funding, SB 2, and other housing-related state actions are constantly evolving. I checked the HCD website this morning, about 9 o'clock, to see if anything had changed since we put this presentation together, and nothing has changed. So everything that I'll be stepping through today is reflective of the most current information from HCD. So as a means of background, SB 2 is the Building Jobs and Homes Act. It took effect on January 1, 2018. It was one of 15 bills in a housing package that was signed by then-Governor Brown. What SB 2 did was create a $75 fee on certain types of real estate transactions, for the purpose of, a variety of purposes that I'll walk through in just a moment. The fee on a given transaction is capped at $75, excuse me, at $225. The fee does not apply to transactions related to owner-occupied residential transactions, so it's other types of real estate transactions, deeds, deeds of trust, quickclaim deeds are the types of transactions that that fee applies to. On June 4 of this year, the board authorized the planning department to apply for SB 1 and On June 4th of this year, the board authorized the Planning Department to apply for SB 1, Year 1 money. And I'll explain that in a bit more detail in just a moment. Those activities specifically, though, were to pursue update of the county-wide zoning rezone program, to increase our supply of available properties for high-density and city developments, and to complement us meeting our regional housing needs allocation. Amendments to the County General Plan, zoning code, and design guidelines to comply with recent legislation, those 15 bills that were signed by the governor, and preparation of an SB 2 funding plan for application and future years' allocations that come out of SB 2. The next slide, and I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this, because this sort of gives the big picture of what SB 2, both Year 1 and Year 2 funding are. And I apologize for any difficulty in being able to make out some of the fine print on the slide. This slide, which was a product of HCD, identifies Year 1 funding. So you could see in Year 1, the blue portion of the pie refers to those planning activities that I just mentioned. And the other half of the pie is activities related to target homelessness. Those funds are not intended to flow to the county, but to the various continuance of care in communities around the state. Those funds are just starting to flow now, from what we understand. And we did receive a notice of award for the blue piece of that Year 1 pie just recently. $625,000 will be going to the Planning Department for those activities that I just mentioned. Moving on, then, to Year 2 and ongoing, there are a variety of activities that are identified for distribution of those funds. Again, so in the Year 2 box, the large pie on the left, it identifies that 10% of the available funding statewide will go to farmworker housing, 15% to Cal-HFA Missing Middle Housing Development, and then 5% for incentives to streamline housing development. The balance, or 70%, is to go, to be distributed to local jurisdictions, cities and counties, through the permanent local housing allocation program, which has a variety of eligible activities. Those are summarized in this slide. The detail lifted right from the SB 2 legislation is provided as Attachment 1 to the staff report. But to summarize those eligible activities, they include pre-development, development, acquisition, rehab, and preservation of multifamily, residential live-work, rental housing that is affordable to extremely low, very low, low or moderate income households, including necessary operating subsidies for development, incentives or matching funds for permitting new housing, home rental and ownership for middle-class families, homeownership opportunities, including down payment assistance, homeless rapid rehousing, rental assistance, navigation centers, emergency shelters, and permanent and transitional housing, or local matching for regional housing trust funds.
Okay, Rob, I'm going to interrupt right there. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I just wanted to catch you, Rob, before you left the slide here. The Year 2 ongoing box there has the two pies, which I understand. My question is this, let's just use farmworker housing as an example. If the, my understanding is that that 10% of Year 2 SB 2 funding is managed by the state of California. State of California could use that 10% wedge to fund a project that's intended for farmworkers in Sacramento County. My question is, can the local government, us, with the portion of SB 2 funding that's at our discretion to appropriate, can it be used to match what the state would be doing on a project, so that we could actually kind of double up the SB 2 investment in a particular project?
I haven't read anything in the draft guidelines that have come out from HCD for the PLHA that would indicate otherwise, that we could not use that. Guidelines have not come out, at least that we've seen, for the farmworker housing component.
I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, PLHA money can be used to match other funds, including local affordable housing funds, or a housing trust fund, which I'll be talking about in a bit more detail. Specifically, in regards to your question, I haven't seen anything that would preclude what you're asking about.
Is there a list or another means of identifying what investment the state is making in those various categories that make up the 30% across the state?
Not that I've seen to date.
Okay. Is there one expected, or?
I certainly expect that we'll see more information. The state has prioritized, there's a calendar that's put out, and it shows when different guidelines will be coming out in draft form, final form, and when the notices of funding availability will be coming out. And the windows haven't opened, that I've seen on the information from HCD, for those programs that are in that 30% yet.
Can I suggest that we ask the express question that I'm asking of the right people at HCD?
Certainly.
About the prospect of using locally appropriated SB 2 allocation combined with state allocation for various categories?
Yes, we certainly can.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Nottoli.
Yeah, I also have a question about farmworker housing, but a little different take on that, in that when I think about this particular funding category, and maybe the more traditional farmworker housing, where it was, you know, multiple units on ranches or farms, and I don't know who has been, you know, involved, maybe the Ag Commissioner would know, obviously EMD has a permitting process, inspection process for some of those designated multi-tenant units. But I think one of the things, and I think this needs to be reflected in the work, and again, I'm going to ask in a moment about some coupling of funding sources here, but when I look at the lay of the land, and certainly in areas that are actively farmed in this community, and I represent a good portion of those, is that one of the things that's been noticeable to me is that in a number of cases where we've traditionally had family farms, and they were occupied by the members of the families who farmed there, and we still have many of those, a number of the transactions over the last probably two decades have seen a lot of those lands be transferred to more corporate holdings, where in the housing becomes rental housing, it becomes occupied in a lot of cases by multiple tenants. And in some cases, modular units are put in place, older modular units. I think we need to have a strategy in this county. When we look at our farmgate activity, it's, you know, well over a half a billion dollars. You look at the employment opportunities, and certainly mechanization, but I think housing for folks that, you know, who live and work, and again, it's not just seasonal. I mean, seasonal in the sense that people come and move through, you know, through the area during harvest or planting. Folks are there year-round, managing vineyards, a lot of tree crops, certainly assisting in dairy operations. And I don't know that this county has really done an examination of that, and I'm not so sure that this would even be a role for the Planning Department. But I do think, when I look at low and moderate income designations under the block grant program, and that's where I'm looking at coupling this, that particularly in the Delta, but certainly portions of the southeastern and southern parts of the county, and maybe even in some of the northern parts of the county, although, you know, some of those farms may be more of a seasonal crop. I guess I'm going to ask that, you know, in looking at how we might couple this money together, but to really do a thorough examination, if we're interested in improving housing for folks who are residents of this county, and probably long-term in a lot of cases, their children attend our local schools, and, you know, are contributing members in the labor force, then I think that housing needs to be examined. And again, I don't know that this is a planning effort, or even something under County Executive. I'm thinking that our housing agency, authority ought to be taking a look at this and working with our Ag Commissioner, and working with our farm families, but also with our agricultural community, because that housing stock, a lot of that is marginal, that's my assessment of it, and is occupied by multiple tenants, people of all ages. And if we're serious about this whole improvement, these aren't, those folks aren't homeless, but I think that we need to take a look at, you know, that aspect, and we need to not just take a look at it, we need to have a strategy to employ, and usually pull down some of those federal dollars, maybe to couple with the state dollars, and our local housing trust fund. Because a lot of times, the housing trust fund goes to folks that are in manufacturing or in a more of a setting that's in a suburban or urban setting. I'm talking about the rural portion of this county, and I think that, you know, this requires a thorough examination. But we really ought to utilize the housing agency, the housing authority, as a part of this. And it's not just a planning exercise or census exercise. I mean, we need to get down into the weeds and talk with folks, and find out with those landowners, who, again, have a responsibility to their employees. But what the interest is, is improving some of that housing out there, because I can tell you, it's marginal.
What we'll do is, based on those comments, we'll pull together a team to look into those questions through all the disciplines that you mentioned.
Okay.
And we'll run that out of County Executive to make sure we have everybody represented on.
Okay. Because I think it's an important aspect that gets overlooked, maybe in this county, because we don't have, you know, some of those row crops, although we've seen a conversion in the valley as well. So our housing may be more and more of individual and/or, you know, a few units on properties, it's not in these large, you know, seasonal housing segments. There are still some of those in the Delta.
Yeah, but we do have a lot of ag housing. We need to look.
We do have, we do, we do. Okay.
Before I move to the next slide in the presentation, I want to just talk a moment about the 70% funding that's distributed. We refer to that as the permanent local housing allocation. Some of, funds are also distributed to non, what are considered non-entitlement communities. And what the state has done in terms of the draft guidelines is use the federal CDBG criteria for identifying entitlement and non-entitlement communities. So for example, Sacramento County is an entitlement jurisdiction. City of Sacramento is an entitlement jurisdiction. There are others with population of 200,000 or lower that are considered non-entitlement jurisdictions that actually have to compete for funds out of this pot. But for Sacramento County and the entitlement jurisdictions, cities, there is an identified allocation. It's formula-based, based upon the percentage of CDBG that that city or county receives relative to the statewide distribution of funds. And so what that means is, moving to the next slide, that Sacramento County will see approximately $2 million, based upon the estimates that have been published by HCD to this point.
Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So 200,000 is an important threshold number to keep in mind in terms of the population and the categorization of entitled versus non-entitled jurisdiction. What if anything is likely to happen after the next census, where a jurisdiction like Elk Grove, who I believe is right near the cusp of turning to 200,000-plus, what would that mean in terms of the SB 2 allocation for the county? Anything?
It's more of a, it could mean that the county could see a small reduction, but it really goes into the statewide, the distribution of the statewide funds. So Elk Grove, in your scenario, would move into that group of entitlement jurisdictions.
So statewide, statewide, then, Rob, then, any jurisdiction that moves from one category to the next vis-à-vis population growth in the census, that is going to have a wholesale effect on the amount of SB 2 funding that currently entitled jurisdictions enjoy?
I would say yes, based on the understanding that we have at this point in time, the way the program would work.
Okay.
Another variable, again, is of course, the transaction activity statewide, in terms of number of transactions recorded, will also affect the size of the pot that's distributed and allocated out.
Okay.
What do you mean transactions?
Well, again, getting back, when I talked about the real estate transaction recording fee of $75 per transaction, so it is an activity-based pool of funding. And we are focusing, a key point also, is when I'm talking about distribution of Year 2 funds, this will be the methodology for allocation moving beyond Year 2 also. So there was a defined methodology for distribution of Year 1 funds for homeless activities and certain planning functions. And then this entitlement allocation process, or competitive allocation process, then applies from Year 2, moving ahead. As I previously mentioned, Sacramento County, again, based upon the current estimate, we would see about $2 million a year come to us. The guidelines, for the final guidelines and the notice of funding availability for the Year 2 program have not yet been published. If you look at the HCD website, it identifies that certain things were going to happen in the month of September regarding the release of the NOFA. That has not happened. It could happen any day, but it has not yet happened. And so essentially, as we're having this discussion today, there isn't a clock running, and we are not missing any opportunities regarding the Year 2 funding. Our examination of SB 2 as one of the multiple housing-related bills, our examination from the county organization standpoint, and sort of the extended organization, has been going on for some time. And multidisciplinary team has been working for some time. That team includes the Office of the County Executive, Planning Department, Department of Human Assistance, our Homeless Initiatives Director, along with Housing and Redevelopment. And it's been a very good discussion, as it's examined SB 2 and the opportunities, sort of hypothesizing, quite frankly, on what will be coming and how it might be applied considering the eligibility criteria. We've talked about alignment with needs that we have, various program needs, and where there are opportunities also. As part of that discussion, we've wandered beyond SB 2 also, and I think it's important to just make a moment and take a moment and talk about that. So, for example, in the course of the discussion, we've identified, coming out of last year, or the current fiscal year budget process, a need for the emergency shelter at the Mather Community Campus. And so we were lining up that program need of about $750,000 with potential SB 2, Year 2 funding. And it is, it is an eligible activity. Through the discussion, we identified that there, with SHRA, that there may be another opportunity to plug that gap, that $750,000 gap, with a different source of funds, that being ESG or Emergency Solutions Grant, and community development block grant money, federal money that comes to the county to address that shortfall at the Mather Community Campus Emergency Shelter. And so, previously scheduled for October 22nd is the consolidated plan and one-year action plan for CDBG and other federal programs, funding programs. And so the use of these funds to address the needs at Mather will be coming forward for consideration by the board, with the presentation coming from SHRA on October 22nd. There's still a gap that we're looking, that we're, of about $50,000, that we're looking to address in the discussions coming into that. But that's an example of the type of thing that has come out of this multidisciplinary collaboration that we've had, looking at SB 2 and other housing bills. Another opportunity.
Supervisor Nottoli.
Yeah, just on that, we're going to see it on the 22nd, but as I read the information in our report, those monies are administered by SHRA, correct?
That's correct. There are county funds that are administered by SHRA.
Okay. And so, but they would have been the natural to go to anyway, wouldn't they have been? I mean, irrespective of SB 2, we would have looked at ESG and CDBG, at least as potential sources. Is that?
There had been earlier conversations, both related to Mather, and also the, and Bruce could step in here also, the Collaborative Shelter Plan up in the River District, and the earlier discussions on use of CDBG and ESG for either the Collaborative Shelter Plan in the River District or Mather had come up without conclusion or without a finding that funds could be used. It was through this continuing examination and looking at different funding sources that we identified what will be presented to the board on the 22nd. So we had So we had looked at that, the answer was no, and then the answer as the discussion continued.
The answer was no, you're saying the answer was no from the agency? Is that what you're telling me?
Bruce?
Supervisor, could you repeat your question, please?
My question is, is that as this is portrayed, that somehow through the conversations on SB2, and I don't want to say magically, that may be, you know, being a little facetious, but that somehow we discovered that we have ESG and CDBG money to, you know, meet some of the shortfalls at Mather community campus. And what I heard Rob just say is that, you know, the answer had been no, and now it's yes because we had these discussions. And I think, you know, collaboration, whether it's with the agency and/or DHA or DHHS, county executive office, I mean, that, you know, that's a presumption that I just think that goes on all the time.
Yes.
And I know, so I guess I'm, I'm curious though, so as I read the report here on SB2, that somehow those monies, you know, became identified because of this process and we knew we had a shortfall, we were, I'm assuming that those folks were at the table. So I guess I want to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so tell me, so I mean.
But it goes back Supervisor, if I may, it goes back to the discussions that we had with this board a few weeks back on a collaborative shelter plan that we developed in concert with the city and how best to use the funding available for the shelters in River District to improve services, sheltering services there. As you recall, that focused on the heap funding that both the city and the county had access to and not the amount that came out of SHRA. So when this situation came up, we looked at that funding and would it not be available for this? Yes, it is. So this is a high priority need that we have. So that discussion, if I may Supervisor, that discussion is a fluid one. You know, you, you look at what you have and how best you can use it, and that's how we arrived at this for the, and the Mather campus. Not going to be used for the collaborative shelter plan, so this is another need that we can use it for.
Okay, no, and I'm fine with, with that being identified, it's just that I think, you know, I heard Rob correct, and somehow the answer came back no, and now it became yes. But I mean, it was, people are always working towards yes all the time.
We are working towards yes.
What I hear you saying.
Yeah, so, you know, the first task we had was looking at how we were going to handle the collaborative shelter plan. We brought this to you a few.
Right, yeah, right, right, right.
And so with the resolution of that, this funding is available. We have this other need with Mather. So yes, we're getting the yes. This is a good use for that funding.
Okay, I know we're getting the yes, that's embodied in the report. I just, again, I think those are natural sources and, and again, when I think about, you know, the agency and again, I just, I'm going to say it out here, the report has all your signatures on it, but I don't see SHRA on this report. And I guess that concerns me is that, you know, we talk about collaboration, that that's not reflected here and that we look to those sources as being important sources. And so, you know, again, that to me, I don't want to read more into it than is there, but that also says to me that this report comes from, you know, Rob and you and Ann and Leanne under Nav's signature. So again, I want to be sure SHRA is giving their due in this process because we look to them and then what they administer in these programs as being critical and it's key. It's key to what we did in the River District, it's key to what we're going to do at Mather and it's key to this. And I, you know, and again, I'm going to be very open about this, is that I still get this sense that there's this tension about, you know, who's going to administer money and, and, and I think that, you know, in my view, unless there's a different policy direction around this and, you know, and I think we need to talk about it today before we're done, that the agency needs to be not only at the table and taking into consideration when we're looking at these funding, you know, issues and the shortfalls and how we figure this out and make good use of our dollars to serve the people of this county, but the agency needs to be a full partner. And again, I, you know, there's, I assume there's a reason why SHRA isn't on this report, but they're talked to and, you know, kind of in the, you know, in, in the second person here and that's, you know, that's concerning to me because again.
I think Supervisor Nattoli, I mean, they are part of the process. We'll be continuing to have discussions with them. There is, if you will, there is a disagreement when we say have the county executive or his designee apply because as you can see, we're applying in different places. My understanding is that they wanted them to be the application. I don't want to get into that kind of conversation. I think that Supervisor Serna was asking, I think you tasked my position to do a lot of things and we will work with whichever department we have to, to get them to do it. Our recommendation is if the board goes with it, 300,000 for senior assistance, appropriate department will administer that and the housing trust, of course, housing trust is done by SHRA and that's who will look at to implement that. But there are some issues we need to continue working with. SHRA on CDBG, I think as Mr. Wackstaff said, that it is a fluid situation. We came up with that solution, but we didn't come up with that solution in a vacuum. That was done with SHRA staff, so.
But they administer CDBG.
I'm sorry.
They administer, they administer the community development block grant program.
Thing we have in our staff report, they do, but it will be a contract with, that we want DHA to administer because of the BOA. So that's an issue administratively, we need to keep working with SHRA is on administration of it. If there's a contract we have, rather than have a contract with Sacramento County, than have a contract with SHRA, we thought it'd be more efficient to have one contract that BOA comes to the county for it. And that's not a conversation for today. We're going to continue working on that issue.
So now, but you mentioned, and it's in the report here too, that your designee, which in the case of Bruce or Ann or Cindy or Rob would be, you know, your direct report, but the executive director of the housing agency and redevelopment agency is not your designee, she reports to this board?
Well, I think what she, the money will be coming to the county and from that point we will administer the money out. So the expectation is that SHRA, if that's what we go with housing trust, that that's who will administer that. Somebody's got to do it on behalf of the county.
If I may Supervisor, may I help with some clarification here? As it relates to the Mather funding, you're right, SHRA on our behalf administers the CDBG and ESG funding, correct. But as it relates to the Mather issue, as you'll see in the board report, we felt it was very important that this funding flowed to DHA so that it could be ministered in a smooth way with the vendor out at Mather, the way we've always done it, so they don't have separate oversight bodies with respect to that. So that's why you see that reference there and also ensuring that that money's.
I'm okay with that, I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
Excuse me? Yeah.
But, but I think it still goes back to, maybe that's the essence of some of the discussion here today and, you know, certainly finish the report and then we can have some more discussion amongst the board, I guess, but is that the SB2 is flowing through the county and then we are part and parceling that out and, you know, and depending upon what we do, including the $300,000, I don't disagree that there's a need and it's, you know, it's embodied in the report, but by spending $300,000 now, then the potential, and I asked Mr. Gill about this yesterday when in my briefing, is that then you forego the ability to seek match on that money. Again, and if the urgency is there, I guess you spend the money when you need it most, but you know, there's the ability, and I don't know what we're looking at, the ability maybe internally to accommodate some of that need for senior housing or those that are at risk of homelessness, to give us a chance to apply for the money before we spend the $300,000 so that we might turn $300,000 into $600,000. I don't, I don't know that.
Well Supervisor, if I may, what you have before you is what I would call a balanced approach. We have an immediate need, as you know, for, to address senior housing. We've talked about that before, as well as an immediate need out at Mather. So we've used the year two funding to address those immediate needs, but we're also maximizing, we're allocating about 1.7 million of what we're proposing to towards the matching that you just referenced. So we certainly are using a large portion of this to match those dollars. On the other hand, we felt it was important to recommend a way that we could use it to address this immediate need.
So on the senior stuff, you were asking if there's a match potential for us, absolutely we're going to pursue it.
But once we spend it, you can't, but what you spend it, you aren't going to be able to match it. So I mean, if you expend it, I assume you're not going to get the match for it.
Well, as you said, this is pretty fluid. I mean, we've been looking at this, keep looking at it. We're seeking authority, if the board so inclined to look at 300,000 for senior, we're going to continue to look at other federal money, state money, if there's something else we can match. We're going to bring that back to the table and look at it.
I guess this last point, Mr. Chair, would be that, you know, assuming the NOFA comes out any day and that there's a, you know, a fairly short timeline on it, that I would think we would be smart if we go with the recommendation is to, you know, hold on to $300,000 if we could find other sources that we could, you know, fill in behind so that we could actually file for the full 2 million and maybe even more to the questions of Supervisor Serna asked about.
No, we plan on filing the full 2 million for the NOFA.
For the match?
No.
No, no, yeah, but I'm talking for the match, where you can do the PHLA or whatever it is, that you basically use that match, your, your entitlement to go for the additional, right? You'll try to turn two into four.
You can, the PHLA has, or PLHA has, as I mentioned, there are multiple eligible activities. Okay, a number of related to production of housing or preservation of housing, affordable housing stock. You can use those funds to match your, your current housing trust fund or affordable housing trust fund. In our case, we have two different, two different funds, so we could certainly match it, match it there. And that is, you could say, well, is that leveraging or is it just contribution to an existing fund balance? It truly is contribution to an existing fund balance. When we talk about matching funds and additional leverage, that starts to introduce another state program, which our collaborative discussions have, have addressed and is referenced in the staff report, that is trailing behind the SB2 year two funds. And that's what's referred to as the local housing match, matching grant program. Okay, that program, again, no guidelines have been established yet, there isn't a NOFA going, the current HCD schedule looks to produce some guidance or some insight to this after the first of the year, around the first of the year. What that program, and it ties to SB3, identifies 57 million statewide for distribution to, that could be used to match PLHA funds and any existing local housing trust funds. So it would, when we talk about matching grant programs coming from the state, this is one that we, that we know is on the horizon. It's not, it's not here and now. If you do the math, if you look at if there's 57 million available statewide, we don't know yet how those funds would be, would be allocated. If they do use a similar methodology to what they used for the SB2 year two money, which by the way, that statewide pot was 138 million, our share was right around $2 million. If you use the same basis for methodology, and this is pure speculation on our part, not seeing anything out of HCD, we'd be looking at just right around a million dollars is what might be available to us to combine with the year two SB2 money, along with the balance that we have, which is currently about $6 million in our affordable housing fund. So we are looking at how we can leverage, how we can apply different sources of funds to match, even with private sector investment, to create new affordable housing and to preserve our existing housing stock. To the extent that we're looking to use $300,000 for, for senior housing, that is, that is correct. We haven't identified the, what I mentioned in terms of state programs to match, I'm not aware if there's a matching program for that, but what we have identified is that there is a need for rental assistance for, for seniors. It is an eligible activity and we believe it's a good investment.
So I think one of the risks that Rob is alluding to, and when I was briefed on this, is that the match, again, we don't have any of this information, we're just making a recommendation. So the maximum match we might get is a million, 1.1 through the state money. And we felt comfortable, I'm part of the decision on it, to come back to the board and recommend a 1.7, even realizing we might not get the last 600,000 as a match because we did not, we want to maximize the match, but we do not want to lower the number because of the match business. We know there's a critical need. Supervisor Serna, when he brought this up, he brought it up, all of you have mentioned we need to do something on housing. That's why we went with a 1.7 on the senior component. We might not find a match, but we did feel pretty strongly coming out of the budget sessions that because of the general fund situation, we find ourselves, any kind of source money we can use to help seniors, that's the base of the recommendation. Again, realizing that if it comes out, the rules change, we have to be back in front of you. If they change the rules and what we're proposing and they come back with something different, we're going to have to be nimble to come back and say, we have something totally different. If for whatever reason, there's more match than we think what it is, that's an internal decision with all the parties listed up there to come back and make a recommendation, do we go in a different direction?
Just one.
If it's overmatched.
Okay, just one last question. So then on the $300,000, you're going to come back to us with how that's going to be made available?
Correct, if I may on that Supervisor, the plan would be certainly work with our stakeholders, the agent commission and others on how best to use that funding, but there's a number of areas that could potentially be used. As you recall, we only got about half of what we requested from the state from the home safe program. So that's an interesting possibility. Also the need for rental assistance, you know, housing subsidies, number of different areas we could potentially use that to address the senior need. But again, we'd want to touch base with our community to make sure that what we were proposing to do is consistent with what they saw as the priority.
Well, lastly, and we've had this conversation and I, you know, I tend to follow up with, with some of you here today, that, you know, on a senior safe house, we're turning one to two seniors a day away from referrals that come through a variety, every from APS and police departments and so forth. Says to me that we got 360 to 700 plus, you know, seniors, you know, in any given year that aren't being able to be housed. They are, you know, either virtually and/or homeless and a lot of those situations are abuse neglect and unsafe situations. Seems to me that just vouchering somebody in a hotel doesn't get to it. I've, discussion about home safe, and so I think we need to have a more thorough discussion here at this board about that as you look to expend these funds. Thanks.
Got it.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I understand from the board letter and certainly from Rob's explanation this morning that there has only been discussion about the use of community development block grant funds to satisfy the, the need at Mather campus. I don't necessarily have an objection to that in concept and I understand that we'll make a determination about that on October 22nd. We're not being asked to make a decision today about the use of CDBG in that amount for that purpose. But my question is, given the narrowness of what SB, what we understand SB2 funding can be used for and given the breadth of what we know CDBG funds can be used for, what's the logic behind using what I would consider more flexible funding through the community development block grant program for that purpose versus the narrowness of SB2 funding, which is obviously targeted towards, towards housing and in this case, the ability to, to keep a, a very successful program alive? So why, why would we, why would we use a quarter million, three quarters of a million dollars in CDBG funding that could be used for other things countywide in terms of infrastructure needs and other capital facilities?
Yeah, I think the, the CDBG, it's a combination of ESG and CDBG money is what we were, what's in discussion for, for Mather. And it is the, the community service component of CDBG. It's not the projects component of CDBG. So with CDBG, when we are doing, be it the streetlights or ADA improvements or infrastructure type, type projects, this is the community service component of CDBG, which for example, other uses, sort of traditional uses for that have been meals on wheels, for example. So this is, we, this isn't money that we could use for, for projects.
But the same, the same question applies then, understanding that, which is, I'm going to want to know, and I assume others on this board will want to know on October 22nd, what are the trade-offs? What if we use this, this segment of funding through the community development block grant allocation, what are we possibly forfeiting or sacrificing to, to do that for, for the Mather campus? I mean, that's, that's part of making an informed decision.
Yeah, and we will absolutely come back and make that because that's part of what we deliberated and discussed a lot. Same flexibility that you mentioned and part of what the reason we're in front of you today with having that kind of proposal was this matching thing we kept thinking about. And we knew there's a need for seniors and we're trying to fit into different places in there, but we will absolutely come back to you on the 22nd when the CDBG, what are the kind of programs that you could have used money if you were, do not want to use it for Mather?
But in addition, I appreciate that, but in addition to that, I'm also going to want to know, kind of a side-by-side comparison of the SB2 funding avail, you know, the expected funding availability through SB2 and, you know, why does it make sense to somehow use that, that specific type of CDBG funding? to somehow use that, that specific type of CDBG funding versus SB two?
Right.
And why would, why would we save that SB two funding to do, you know, other things, right?
I think what we can do side by side, we can give you the guidelines, so we have more of a robust conversation about it.
Lastly, the, the other thing I'd like to know on the 22nd is, you know, our housing authority currently administers all the tax credits that, that are used for various affordable housing projects, programs across the county and across the city. What is, what is the expectation, to Supervisor Tolle's earlier point about administration of SB two, what is the expectation in terms of avoiding a more complicated bureaucracy involving now multiple agencies for someone that wants to invest in affordable housing, or maybe even housing for those that were formerly homeless? How are we going to avoid any potential confusion if you have two different agencies now, one administering SB two and the other administering tax credits, when those projects would likely require both?
Yeah. What we've talked about, and good, good question, what we've talked about is when we look at what is proposed to be, based on the $2 million assumption, 1.7 would go into the housing trust fund. That is a county fund that is administered by SHRA. On the 24th, the Board of Supervisors approved the multifamily lending guidelines, for example, which, which dictate how that, how those funds are administered. These SB two year two funds, in any future year where the board would authorize that allocation to go into the housing trust fund, it would just be administered through our existing programs unless there was a change made. So we're not looking to create duplicate systems by any stretch of the imagination. We're looking to...
Supervisor Serna, I think we can absolutely answer, but the way I look at it, it's more of a clearinghouse, the money comes in, it goes into housing trust fund that they administer, if the board so agrees with a 300, then it goes into whatever county department. And that's all we're doing, is just funneling the money.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, moving on to the last slide, which are the...
We already did all that.
Yeah, we've done it, we've pretty much done this. But again, it identifies the, the senior programs and the, and the housing trust fund. It identifies, it, it flags for the county executive to come back to the board when we know more about the local matching fund. So our recommendations today regarding moving forward with recommendation one, A and B, that's based on what we know today, and it's also structured to allow us to be sort of nimble and move quickly if the NOFA comes out. For example, next, next week, we would be able to move ahead with authorization of your board. On the, on the matching grant program though, we're saying we better come, we would recommend that we come back to the board, because we don't know enough about that program or the way it's going to work yet. And then number three deals with SB two, year two, and beyond, in terms of setting up a administrative structure and a management structure for dealing with this moving ahead, because this is going to be a new program. There are going to be annual allocations that come out. So what we're proposing is, let's have the county executive bring forward a, an annual report on what's the status of the program, what are the uses that we might propose for board consideration for the next year's allocation. And then also, what we've identified is, as more definition comes out of the state, out of HCD and others, on these other housing bills, that we will come to the board to give the board a briefing and get a direction, as may be appropriate at that point in time, for those new programs as they take definition and come forward. That won't be part of an annual report, that will be whenever we have enough information to come forward and engage with the board. So those are our recommendations.
Supervisor Tolle?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I would like to add to the recommendations that we do an assessment of farm worker housing needs in our county, in our communities, and that we, you know, task the appropriate folks to do that, and that we have that report back certainly sooner than, than the annual report. I heard Mr. Gill respond and say that that could be done. I think we need to undertake that with some seriousness, in that, you know, we look to compete for those dollars, and, and there's things that are unique to our county relative to, you know, farm worker and farm labor housing, then we need to be able to, I think, articulate that in a way that allows us to compete for sufficient dollars to address that need, because I think that's a kind of a relatively invisible piece of the housing need here in a county that obviously has a million and a half people in large metropolitan area, but we do have some rural housing needs in this community. And secondly, I guess I would just ask that, I think, you know, the intent here is obviously provide an annual report, but I would even suggest that I think with discussion we've had thus far today, that we have a semi-annual report, so that aligns with, you know, obviously there'll be, from time to time, is, I take into account here what you say, that you may come to us separately. But I think going into this, and I think for at least the early years, with the competitive nature, some of the unknowns, but also I think the opportunities that it presents, and I think the challenges that this community has, as it relates to housing for folks from all walks of life, but certainly those that, you know, have some serious challenges, I just, I think it'd be important to have that, and maybe align one with budget, and one with, you know, you know, the program that comes with SHRA, you know, in the, in that kind of November, December timeframe, and certainly you come as needed. But I think it's important that we have clear alignment with the board, obviously working with all the respective partners here, but certainly within, you know, within the county and Housing Development Agency, that we have a clear understanding about, you know, where we're headed. And again, this may not sound like a lot of money, but $2 million, coupled with what we're doing in other fronts, can be a significant source of funding on an annual basis, and I'd like to see us compete well for other opportunities. So I would ask that we have the semi-annual report. Thanks.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. And learning from the lessons of what we've gone through in the last couple of years concerning the Mental Health Services Act, I would make a strong suggestion that, because this is going to be an annual allocation that we, that we enjoy, that if we are going to direct a good portion of this annual appropriation to the housing trust fund, for example, in other words, if we, we expect that we need to let the money, the funding collect, so that we can reach critical mass for certain projects, programs, that we have a plan in place to very transparently and clearly communicate to the public, especially affordable housing advocates, why we're doing that, so that we're not accused of not, not using the resources. That's why I say, that's why I prefaced it the way I did. I think otherwise, we stand a chance of possibly being, being accused of sitting on, on resources when, in the middle of a crisis. So I would strongly encourage us to put something like that in place.
Point well taken, and we'll absolutely do that.
Thank you.
It was a painful lesson, but a lesson learned.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to emphasize that point, I think we do need to do some planning for the trust fund, not only for, you know, public transparency, but for us to continue to review that fund and make sure it's being used and it doesn't disappear into the ether, the attention to it. So I, I'd look forward to that discussion.
Okay. I'm gonna just chime in and say that, you know, a lot of this, you know, this is good staff, we're considering a lot of, we're balancing the two things, as, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we want to be poised and ready when it's time, but at the same time, there's a lot of moving parts still and a lot of crystal balling. So I think that what you put forward addresses multiple needs, takes advantage of SB two resources, if, and when they can become available. I do appreciate the, the $300,000 proposal for the vulnerable seniors. I met with members of the continuum of care, and they specifically asked for a program that would provide some rental assistance, because as we know, the point in time count showed that the fastest growing population percentage wise of homeless people are seniors, for a number of reasons, many of which are on SSI and have, or under other programs, that a very small amount of money can be the difference between housed and homeless. And we save a whole lot of money, not that we're doing it just for fiscal reasons, but we do, save a whole lot of money by being there up front, at the, the front end, and keeping people from becoming homelessness, particularly the most vulnerable, which are seniors. So I do appreciate that work and the work that's been done here. Supervisor Frost?
My, my comments are kind of consistent with everyone else's. I think it's great that you're focusing on seniors, that's, that's something that's emerged as a growing problem, and, and it's a lot less expensive if we can help them with housing versus if they are homeless and we're paying for medical and, and other financial considerations. So I'm supportive of your recommendation and appreciate all your work on it.
Ms. Chair, I would move the staff recommendation, but I would modify it to include the direction to conduct a farm worker housing needs assessment to get some additional information that will inform this board and this county about the needs, but also help us be competitive in that realm. And I don't know if that needs to be embedded in a resolution, and secondly, that we have semi-annual reports to this board on SB two funding status and the variety of items that would come with that.
Second. Supervisor Serna will say it. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, for item 40, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency and Sacramento County Water Financing Authority. Authorization for the issuance of the Sacramento County Water Financing Authority Revenue Bonds, Zone 40 and 41, 2019 refunding project, and approval of the related documents and certain other related actions.
Supervisor Kennedy and members of the board, I think I already introduced, if I did my, Colin Bettis is our new county debt officer, he comes from the city of Sacramento, he worked in the Treasury Office, so this is his first bond issuance with us, so Colin.
Well, if you worked for the city, you had a lot of experience with debt, so that's great.
Ding.
So those of you on Channel 14, send your letters to Susan Peters.
Good morning. As, as mentioned, I'm Colin Bettis, your county debt officer. The item before you now is the issuance of the Sacramento County Water Financing Authority Series 2019 Refunding Bonds, in an amount not to exceed 115 million. The bonds are intended to refund the Series 2007 bonds and pay certain associated costs. The Series 2007 bonds were issued to refund the Series 2003 bonds and provide a portion for the acquisition and construction of an intake facility, pipeline, pipelines for the distribution and water treatment facility, and to pay for costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. The refunding will reduce the current outstanding amount of bonds, as well as future debt service through the final maturity of the 2007A bonds, which is June 1st, 2028. The bonds are payable from net revenues of Zones 40 and 41 of the Water Agency and are not an obligation of the county's general fund. The estimated net present value savings are 17.2 million, with an annual average debt service savings of 2.4 million. The bonds have been rated A+ by S&amp;P and AA3 by Moody's, indicating upper, medium grade, and high grade respectively. The savings may allow the agency to fund additional Water Agency projects, provide for the capacity when looking at to issue additional debt for future projects, or reduce the demand on rate increases in the future. The recommended actions are the following: For the Sacramento County Water Agency to adopt a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Agency relating to the issuance by the Sacramento County Water Financing Authority of its revenue bonds, and approving the forms and of, and authorizing the execution and delivery of the third supplemental installment purchase contract, a bond purchase contract, an official statement, a continuing disclosure certificate, and authorize other certain related actions. Second, for the Sacramento County Water Financing Authority to adopt a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Authority for similar actions as previously listed for the agency, and authorize the Chair of the Board, the Chief Fiscal Officer, and the Director of Finance in consultation with County Council to do any and all things to execute and deliver any and all documents necessary to consummate the execution, sale, and delivery of the 2019 Sacramento County Water Authority Financing Authority Zones 40 and 41 refunding project. This concludes my presentation. With me here today are Gina Mcgann of Oric as Bond Counsel, Juan Fernandez of JP Morgan Chase, the senior underwriter, Alex Lane of PFM, the county's financial advisor, and Michael Peterson, the Director of the Water Agency. And we should be available for any questions.
Supervisor Tolle?
Yeah. Thank you for your work on this, and all the, obviously, the parties you've mentioned for bringing this to us, certainly supportive of this, but to a tidbit that you mentioned in your verbal presentation, and certainly occurred to me, and that is, is that before we make some determination about either going forward and funding more, and/or what impact it may have on future rate increases within the realm of water supply, we've had any number of hearings over the last decade or so about raising water rates, and certainly some of that relative to what we took on in debt to, you know, build portions of the system, that again, are important for the long-term viability and prosperity of our community. Nonetheless, as a member of this board who represents, you know, a large segment of the folks who would be affected by any future water increases, and I guess I'm very interested to know, and again, there's no attachment, that's not the item before us today, but, you know, the net impact of that. And so before we get too carried away with what we've got to do in the future, I want to know, now that I talked about this bit yesterday, you know, some rate stabilization and/or, you know, mod, you know, modulating or moderating some of what might have been projected, and I've seen some of those projections this board has, obviously Mr. Peters and others have brought that before this board, I think we need to, you know, have a good thorough discussion now before we embark on any future...
Absolutely, we will.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move the item.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 41, Authorization for the Issuance and Sale of Bonds of the Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Bonds, Election of 2012 Measure R, 2019 Series D, in an amount not to exceed 30,900,000 by a negotiated sale and approval of related documents and certain other related actions.
Again, Colin Bettis, the county debt officer, the, the issue before you is, as mentioned, the issuance of the Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Bonds, Election of 2012 Measure R. These bonds are intended to fund the acquisition and construction of the central kitchen facilities located at 3051 Redding Avenue in Sacramento, as well as costs of issuance, bond insurance, and capitalized interest. The bonds will be general obligation bonds payable by taxes from property owners within the school district. The vote approving these bonds was held in 2012, as stated in the name of the bonds. The Board of Education of Sacramento City Unified School District requests that the county authorize the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds. The district has received a negative certification in its most recent interim budget report, which prevents it from selling bonds on its own, on its own behalf. The school district will issue its own refunding bonds of prior issuances of general obligation bonds for savings of greater than 5%. For all series of bonds planned to be issued, the county will act as the paying agent. While the county will act as the paying agent, no revenues of the county are pledged for the repayment of the bonds. The recommended actions are the following: For the County of Sacramento to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the Sacramento City Unified School District, not to exceed 30,900,000 pursuant to one or more bond purchase agreements, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of said bond purchase agreements, approving the forms of one or more paying agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates relating to the bonds. Second, to authorize and direct the Chief Fiscal Officer and the Director of the Department of Finance in consultation with County Council to do any and all things to execute and deliver any and all documents of the bonds. And finally, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance in consultation with County Council to execute and deliver a refunding paying agent agreement for the concurrent issuance of the district's 2019 general obligation refunding bonds and other related actions. This concludes my presentation today, and today here with me are Jeff Small and Robert Bindorf of Capital PFG, the financial advisor for the school district, as well as a member of the school district board as well. And should you have any questions, we're here for...
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, as you've noted, both orally here today and also in the board letter, the school district is currently, currently has a negative certification on its interim budget. And I think we're all well aware of the challenge that still persists for the school district in terms of their fiscal condition. You mentioned that no county obligation exists with this action.
That's correct.
So, what does happen if the school district finds itself in the same predicament it currently is in a year, year and a half, when then the prospect of a quote-unquote "state takeover" looms large again?
So, the bonds themselves are paid through taxes rather than through any of the budget of the school district. And so, even in an instance in which the state would take over, the county would still maintain its role as a paying agent, taxing the property owners within the district and making the payment on the bonds.
Okay, so, no, there's no scenario where the county is somewhere, somehow on the ...
No.
No. So, what will happen is the first lien, if you will, to pay will be on debt obligation if somehow property taxes are not sufficient. It will be default against the school, not the county. There's no recourse back to the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
So, it's my understanding that whatever the cost of the bond is, that if the cost goes up, then the taxes are adjusted accordingly to pay for the cost of the bond. Is there a requirement for reserves in the event that there's added cost in one year that the district doesn't have the money to cover, or how does that work?
So, when the bonds are issued, they'll be issued with funding for a reserve amount as well.
Oh, okay.
And so, that'll already be there for a debt service reserve, a typical bond service, debt service reserve. But yes, as you mentioned, if there was a shortfall in the payment in any given year, the taxes in the following year could be increased on those properties within the district to pay, to refill those buckets, to essentially pay back that reserve, and then to pay any additional debt service.
And do they also have the added insurance, like if they can't sell it for some reason, to help ensure that they can refinance the bond? If, like, if the rates went up and they were at the ... I'm assuming this has a term, this issuance has a term, and then at some point they'll have to possibly refinance out of it, or they wouldn't have to unless there was an improvement, a five percent savings?
So, the school district has a policy on their refundings, that they meet a five percent threshold for refunding. So, when they look at refunding these bonds, there's potential for opportunities in the future to reduce down the debt service. But that would be on the school district and their financial advisor to look into those refunding opportunities. As the, in this instance, the school board directed their financial advisor to bring forward to them any opportunities for refundings that generated five percent or more. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Let me see if I can help.
Yeah, is this a, is this a fixed rate?
It's a fixed rate.
Okay, got it. Okay, so, I think my head was wrapped around where are we going with interest rates and if it's not fixed rates, so I'm good.
It's fixed rate.
You answered it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then I will move to, for staff recommendation and with the editorial that it's about time. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. For item forty-two, this is the forty-seven forty New York Avenue tentative subdivision map project. Appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a tentative subdivision map to divide one point two-four acres into four-fifths lots in the RD five zone for a property located at forty-seven forty New York Avenue in the Fair Oaks community. The environmental document is a negative declaration, and I will say that for this item, we do need to take an oath.
So, at this time, would anybody who intends to speak on this item please stand and raise your right hand, and the clerk will read you the oath.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Yes.
And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record in the statement I have been sworn.
Thank you. Ms. Moffett.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, County Planning Director.
Still morning, LeAnn.
Good morning.
This feels like.
I'm so used to being an afternoon item.
I kind of like where you're going with that.
All right, good morning. Here to give the staff presentation on forty-seven forty New York Avenue. This is a tentative subdivision map, and it's actually an appeal. The location is forty-seven forty New York Avenue in the community of Fair Oaks. The request before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a tentative subdivision map. The site is one point two-four acres in size, and the applicant is requesting five lots in the RD five zone. There's also a special development permit to allow more than two lots to be served by a private drive and a design review. This slide shows an aerial of the property fronting on New York Avenue. The site is outlined in red. Immediately to the right of the red area are four lots that were, actually, four lots and a remainder lot that were previously approved as part of a prior tentative subdivision map that are also served off this private drive. So, I wanted to make reference to that while you have the aerial up.
Just for noting that, though, that red box isn't properly aligned, though, because you're not taking out the neighbor's house.
No.
Just the living room.
Yeah. That's a common issue with our GIS system. The further out from the downtown you get, a lot of times, the lines don't align perfectly.
Okay, all right.
Yes, apologize for that. This is the overall site plan provided by the applicant, showing the five lots on the private drive here. We also have some context photos, pictures of the site. I specifically wanted to point out the photo on the bottom left. It shows, because tree removals and trees have been a part of the conversation with regard to this parcel map, and that does show three olive trees that were transplanted onto the site and have since died, and more trees have, replacement trees have been planted So, covering some of the history associated with this project, the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council initially met in January of two thousand nineteen, and they recommended denial of the proposed project, and they also pre-authorized an appeal in the event that the Planning Commission did approve it. There was a lot of neighborhood concerns about just general infill, the typical, you know, a lot of the kinds of things that we see with neighborhood concerns with regard to traffic and parking and drainage and so forth. So, they did have a variety of concerns there. The Design Review Advisory Committee considered the project in February and found the project in compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And then, the Planning Commission, who is typically the final hearing authority for subdivision map, considered the project in July of two thousand nineteen. There were only three members present for that Planning Commission hearing, and I want to note that staff informed all of the projects that were on that hearing that night that there would only be three members. We knew that in advance, and told each applicant or applicant representative that it would take three votes to approve any of their projects, so that they knew that in advance and had the opportunity to request a continuance. In this case, the applicant moved forward with the hearing, and during the final deliberations and the final voting by the Planning Commission, it, there was a motion to approve the project, and that failed on a two-to-one vote. So, then, the project applicant has since filed an appeal of that denial, and that is the item that's before you today.
Will you explain why a vote of two-to-one and failed?
So, the voting, you're questioning what the voting member who recommended, who voted against it.
Well, I mean, if it's two-to-one, a lot of people would look at that and think that it passed, is what I'm saying.
Got it. No, the standing provisions of the Planning Commission are that it takes three votes.
Thank you.
In order to have a project be approved, so.
And there were absences.
Yes, there were absences, and a majority of the members present does not constitute approval.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Regarding some of the key points, from planning's review and planning's perspective, the project is in the RD five zone, which has a minimum lot size of fifty-two hundred square feet. The lots meet and exceed minimum lot sizes, widths, and setbacks. Now, there's a lot of detail about that in your Planning Commission report, including an analysis of the prevailing lot sizes in the surrounding area. Admittedly, in Fair Oaks, there are a lot of lots that are substantially larger than the minimum RD five lot zone. A lot of the lots tend to be ten thousand square feet and up, but we have concluded these lots are between eighty-five hundred and ten thousand square feet, so they're well above the minimum RD five lot size, which planning considers appropriate in an infill situation. And so, we do believe they are compatible with the zoning and the surrounding prevailing area. The applicant is requesting a special development permit to allow more than two lots to be served by a private drive and to allow two lot, more than two lots to deviate from the public street frontage requirements. There will essentially be a total of ten lots served off this private drive when you count the lots associated with the prior parcel map. The private drive was installed as part of that previous project. It is, would not allow for on-street parking, so in order to address some of the neighborhood concerns about parking, they will have their garages and the apron in front of the garages, and we've also conditioned the project to have additional guest parking space on each lot, so that there would be additional guest parking in addition to the parking, normal parking provided in front of the house. So, there'd be a minimum typically of probably five parking spaces on each lot.
Okay, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, LeAnn, and just a question as it goes to the previous matter that didn't come to this board. In two thousand sixteen, did not the staff report, recognizing obviously that this request wasn't before us, but when you allow, you know, four or five lots to be created to the rear, taken off of the Olive Avenue or New York Avenue frontage, that the issue would come up? And so, rather than to have a public street dedication, we allow a private drive? I mean, I would say the planning department should at least anticipate that discussion, and maybe you did in the previous staff report, neither here nor there, because obviously this was approved, but to, you know, some of the correspondence we've seen, which you've summarized in the staff report. So, why wouldn't the staff analysis at the time have taken into account? It would not necessarily predetermine the outcome of the previous request, but you wouldn't have the issue we have here today, at least in part with some of the folks, about the private drive and the number of lots being served off the private drive, and what you were talking about, it doesn't allow for parking and so forth. Why wouldn't that have been taken into account in the previous map?
I mean, I think we just judged the four lots were adequate. It met the standards, the standards for review on a parcel map are typically lower than they are on a subdivision map, and so, we did allow the parcel map to go through. I didn't attend the subdivision review committee on that parcel map, but.
Well, I guess I would say that maybe a bit of a lesson learned that from a standpoint, you know, it's hard to anticipate. Nobody knows. And this wasn't, I don't trust it wasn't the application at the time, maybe it was, or at least maybe it contemplated. But, you know, I would think that, you know, forward planning would look at that if you're going to allow a private drive to serve a parcel map, and you know you're going through another property to get there, that you would think about what might be the future, and it'd be some discussion, and nothing else, in the staff report and/or at the subdivision review committee and planning commission, if that's where it went, so that people could at least have that eyes wide open on it. Again, it doesn't change what's before us here today, but it does at least, I think, address as to how we look at these, and these don't come in, you know, in great numbers. So, I would hope that, I mean, from a planning standpoint, and Public Works, too, that we would note that, that, you know, what happens in the future, if there's future, you know, lots that you're passing through to get to this were to be created, what situation that creates.
Right.
Just a point. Thanks.
Supervisor Serna, I'm sorry.
A quick question. Has the staff's disposition on this proposal, this project, changed at all from CPAC to today?
Well, when we go to the CPAC, we don't have a recommendation yet. We wait until after the CPAC to learn what the concerns are. But it has not changed since we issued our staff report in favor prior to the.
For the Planning Commission.
No, it has not changed.
Thank you.
Drainage has also come up as an issue, and we do have some staff from Department of Water Resources here if there's any additional questions that come up. The project will utilize an existing drainage canal. A drainage study has been done, and the attachment two has a series of eight or so conditions all around the drainage with regard to ensuring that the applicant follows through and follows through with the drainage study and does construct the drainage improvements which are planned on the property. Yes, and I can point out those conditions for you. They are in attachment two. They are, start with condition nineteen, so they're conditions nineteen through twenty-nine. So, there are ten conditions addressing drainage.
I read those, but it didn't really call out some of the neighbor concerns. I realize that often doesn't happen in conditions, but there are a couple that, of the letters that are pretty strong about the drainage conditions, that, you know, we can only see if it were raining. And I'm hoping that you brought somebody with you to address the concerns in some of the letters.
I did ask Water Resources staff to be here in anticipation of you having some questions.
Okay.
And a lot of times, I will say, just in, you know, I can't answer all the detailed drainage study questions.
I don't expect you to.
And we do have the applicant's engineers here as well. A lot of times, the fine details are worked out after the map is approved in order to ensure consistency with the drainage study. How the actual improvements are installed is part of subsequent actions, but I understand you want some reassurance and more information about that at today's hearing, so.
Particularly since there's been a development prior, and there's a creek, and there's a lot of things going on in this vicinity.
Yes.
So, I will want to hear from Water Resources.
Okay. Thank you. I previously mentioned that the project has received opposition from the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council and the surrounding community. I don't have a bullet point on this slide relating to the trees, but in, during the briefings, there were some questions about what has happened on site with some of the trees. Initially, there was a removal of some trees on site and some street trees by the applicant without a permit. There was an oak tree that was removed. They have paid their fees, so from planning standpoint, we have closed the oak tree violation out because they did remedy that. With regard to olive trees, there were some olive trees that I mentioned in that initial slide. Those were actually replanted ones, but there had been some olive trees in the street right-of-way that were removed. The applicant initially transplanted a round of trees, planted and transplanted trees. Those didn't make it and died, and they have again replanted trees. And there are a couple of conditions in attachment two requiring that the trees be maintained, the replacement trees in the street be maintained, so that they can grow enough to be healthy, and also that some olive trees be planted on the actual lots, the residential lots. There's an anticipation that they are going to ask and we are going to waive the street improvements, so it's very likely that the Class C improvements will remain without the installation of the curb, gutter, and sidewalk.
What do you mean by very likely?
So, there's a process for them to ask for a waiver, and planning.
And it's not part of this application today?
It isn't part of the application today. You could actually direct that today if you want it.
I plan to.
Okay.
Supervisor Serna, I'm sorry.
I, this is irritating to me because the sidewalk issues we've been talking about for years, mostly with Department of Transportation, about when, I think when we were doing the sidewalk master plan, Don, do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
And that we would remove that condition from neighborhoods that were Class C streets, so we wouldn't have the, you know, have a developer come in with the plans drawn with sidewalks and then luckily not have to improve them from their standpoint because of the cost. So, maybe we can talk about that offline, but we need to get that squared away within the planning department.
Okay.
Sorry, Phil, that's.
When a motion's made, we will anticipate revising condition for. Okay, so when a motion's made, we will anticipate revising condition 14, just so you know what it is, to here today approve the waiver.
Thank you.
Yes, that can be done.
So I want to make sure I understand this, because this is the way it was characterized to me by the applicant, is that they removed the olive trees, they acknowledged that they weren't supposed to remove the olive trees, they were required to put the olive trees back. These are the ones in the street right-of-way. They put the olive trees back. So now am I hearing that we are going to require them to remove the trees?
No, it is not our intent to require them to move the trees.
Okay.
That's with the Class C improvements remaining.
Okay.
Then those trees would be there.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just to the two previous points here, and certainly what Susan said, we went through that at a number of neighborhoods, and yet, we wouldn't even see this subdivision map if it hadn't been for the series of circumstances. And so, I guess what needs to happen, Leanne, it's not just the planning department, it needs to do with Public Works and Infrastructure, there needs to be some delineation, so it isn't lost, because if you look at the maps, the aerials here, and some of this developed isn't all that old, where sidewalks, not necessarily along New York Avenue, but there's been some curb returns and so forth that bring that right out to the street. And I think to Susan's point, there are a number of neighborhoods, and they're certainly not all in District Three, that have different standards and approaches that, you know, are part of the, you know, the neighborhood ambiance, and it may not provide for all the pedestrian access that, you know, is, you know, encumbered with, you know, the Class A requirements or something that's more than what's there now. But I think that needs to get embedded, and again, it's not just for you as planning director, because we went through that exercise, and yet, I think legitimately, folks down in, you know, that are doing plan review and so forth, there's a county adopted standard. It doesn't say, "But if you live in XYZ neighborhood," it doesn't apply. If folks don't apply for a waiver, then that's either going to be the condition, and they're going to build that, probably much to shirk in of folks, and this board would never see that. And so, I think that we need to go back and either dust off that, the master plan we did relative to pedestrian access, and, but also, as we look at the county development standards, that we call out and give that authority, if it's not there, for whether it's the director of county infrastructure or someone designated, to have that ability to certainly exercise the discretion appropriately, but make sure that gets a review rather than just, this is a county requirement, it gets stamped, and then next thing you know, we've got upset neighbors because...
Right.
And developer builds it to the standards required, and so...
We clearly knew there was going to be a request for a waiver, and we do know that.
No.
And we do exercise our judgment, and we have a group that meets routinely, like once a month. And in these cases, where there are these neighborhoods, where the imposition of sidewalks would be out of character...
Okay.
They do allow for the Class C improvements.
Okay.
And...
But so, this group that meets, so that authority, the discretion is vested with...
Transportation, staff, a planner, and metro fire.
Okay, and what is the documentation that directs or gives out authority? Is it in the county development standards?
I don't know exactly what...
Okay, well, again, because again, as, you know...
I know they meet monthly, I don't know what...
No, yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that. That's good, and I'll discount that, but that's a matter of practice versus in somewhere written, maybe it is written, I just...
I think it is written, I just don't know where it's written.
Okay, all right. I just want to be sure of that, because, you know, it comes up today, and it's not even accompanying request here.
SIPs oversees that, they convene it monthly, and it is part of the process.
Thanks.
Continue.
All right. So this final slide summarizes the recommendations of the staff report, which is to approve the project. That would be overturning the planning commission's action and approving the proposed project, determining the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, and adopting the negative declaration, adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Approve the tentative subdivision map subject to findings and conditions. Approve the special development permit, and find the project in compliance with the design guidelines. And in summary, I mean, I do want to say, as from county staff's perspective, we think that this is an appropriate infill site. We think that housing is good, we think that the lot sizes at the 8,500 to 10,000 square feet are appropriate, given the RD5 zoning. We understand we have an oversight role. We understand there are some neighbor concerns. We know Supervisor Peters wants to hear more details about the drainage, there are examples of that, and we have an ongoing oversight role to play as they build these homes, and that we, as staff, we will continue to play that appropriate oversight role as they build out.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Leanne, when was the last time, you may not know the answer to this, but when was the last time that this site was zoned for anything besides RD5?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, my assumption is it's been zoned RD5 for years and years and years.
Decades, probably.
Decades, yeah.
A lot of that happened in the 70s, I was told.
Seventy, seventy-six, seventy-eight.
You were here, right?
Well, no.
I wasn't.
Just that she was told. I was close to getting here, but not quite.
That is the last time that the county tended to do large zoning actions, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Leanne. We have seen no more questions. I do have cards, but I'm going to let the applicant go first, if, or the, I'm sorry, the appellant. So if there's a representative of the appellant here, that would be great.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisor Mike Durkey here on behalf of Andre Petron, the appellant.
And you have been sworn?
I'm sorry?
Have you been sworn?
I have been sworn, thank you. I'm going to play the emcee this morning, going to be very brief. You guys have a busy day, and we don't want to take up too much time of it.
You're correct on all of those points.
Thank you very much, sir. I don't mean to make this sound immodest, I teach the subdivision map act throughout California. I've been doing it for about 35 years. I met some of the folks involved with the properties a couple of years ago who tried to track me down in Sacramento, they were too late, tried to track me down in the Bay Area, they were too late, and we met in San Luis Obispo. So I've been helping them for the last few years. They told me about a friend of theirs, they're Ukrainian, they're very tight-knit, and they told me about a friend of theirs who might benefit from my help, and here I am today. First and foremost, I want to thank your staff. I do have the pleasure of going all over California. I have projects from San Diego to Eureka, and this is some of the best staff work I've seen. So accolades to them, beautifully presented, the things line up. I see a lot of things that don't in a lot of great communities in California, and so hats off to your staff. They've done an A-plus job putting together the administrative record and have underscored that the only substantial evidence in the record is to support this appeal and to approve this project. We're going to be happy to answer all the questions that you may have. I think staff's done an A-plus job. The drainage has been taken care of. There's only two homes that front New York, so the aesthetic of the neighborhood is preserved. The large parts are larger than many of the existing surrounding lots. But I told you I was going to play master of ceremonies, and that's what I'm going to do. I'd like to introduce to you Steve Norman, the project's engineer, I'm sure all of you know him, and then if I may, reserve a little bit of time at the very end if there's any need for rebuttal, and I'll do it then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Steve Norman, CNA Engineering. I have been sworn, and I'm here just to answer any questions. I concur with all the staff's presentation and the conditions of approval. I do want to say that this project, I've been involved with it since the initial application. Gone to all the hearings and meetings, especially the community council, Fair Oaks Community Council meeting, I've gone to both of those. The first one we went to, there were a lot of issues with parking and access and garbage cans and all those type of things, so we continued it. We revised our tentative map to address all the issues that seemed to be issues at the first meeting. We put in extra parking spaces for guest parking, we put areas for garbage cans, and we saved all the trees and doing everything that the council wanted. So we thought we were on pretty good standings with the council when we went the second time, but unfortunately, we got a denial anyway, even though we revised our application. But I think the application before you and that we took to the commission is a good project that exceeds all the minimums from that zone, RD5 zone, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Are there any questions at this time?
Yes.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Let's go back to the drainage from your standpoint, and then I would want to hear from the county. Letters from several people that mentioned problems with the drainage, and that there was a retaining wall built, but that the lowest row of blocks in the retaining wall are above the ground level, which is problematic. Can you...
I can't speak to that specifically, I'm not aware. I know we engineered, we did two drainage studies. One, we were the engineers on the previous project that was, that's been built and approved, and those houses have since been built and they're there now, and we did a drainage study for this project. Before this land was developed, it was just a meandering little swale that went through the, through a horse pasture. We've done a drainage analysis to confine the drainage into a channel, which now gives it better flow and better storage, and it's all been done through hydrology study and calculations to improve the drainage coming through there, rather than just opening into a field, spreading out real wide and going through that area. They built a portion of that with the first project that was built, that parcel map in the back. The rest of the project will be built with this, if it gets built, will go through, this project will be constructed. And I don't have the study with me, but Water Resources could probably speak to that more specifically as far as what they required, but whatever Water Resources wanted, we designed it and made it work. So I think we improved the drainage in the big picture.
Okay. Have you seen the letter from Mr. Gabrielson?
I, yeah, I can't... I've been sworn, and I can talk, speak about that retaining wall.
Okay.
Can you speak between the microphones?
Yes.
And push the microphones together, I'm having trouble hearing all of them.
Kind of short, I guess, so I got it. So regarding the retaining wall, there's, it's actually on a separate, on the subdivision that's behind this, one that's being talked about now, but county staff, when we were doing the improvements, came in and asked us to do basically a secondary wall behind an additional retaining wall that was there to reinforce it. So that's why the block wall is above the one that's in that email.
Yeah, I don't understand what you're talking about, so...
So you were asking about the retaining wall?
I understand what I asked about, but so, you built two retaining walls?
That's correct, yes. It's a redundancy that's in the building standard.
Adjacent to each other?
Correct. It's a technicality that happens in the design specs, and so, we just went in and did two retaining walls, one behind the other, and it was a redundancy. We tried to talk with SIPs to kind of figure it out, but they said, "No, just stick with the standard." So we ended up doing two retaining walls, one back-to-back.
Do you have an illustration or a photo or anything that can illuminate?
I can, I should have it in my phone, yeah. If you would like, it'll take me a couple of minutes to look at it.
Does planning have a photo? I mean, that's impossible to understand, sorry.
I don't, and it's associated with the prior parcel maps and the improvement plans with those lots, so technically, it's not really part of the appeal item today, but obviously...
That is correct, yes. It's not part of the appeal item today.
We can look into it with SIPs subsequently and report back possibly.
That's the drainage shed, though. I mean, it's the downstream drainage, so it would seem to me that it's still relevant, because the study Mr. Norman performed was for both of these projects, the one before us and the previous one.
Right.
Apologize. This portion that is being spoken about is not, has nothing to do with the drainage at all. It actually just has to do with retention of soil. It potentially, the person that emailed them just wasn't aware of it, but it has nothing, it has nothing to do with the drainage.
Well, says you put in a drainage pipe.
That's, standard is always to put in a drainage pipe behind a retaining wall so that it flows out, but that's, that's just, that's just the standard. So that was put in, that is correct.
Okay, well, maybe somebody from Water Resources can explain it a little bit. And maybe while we're waiting, you can draw it out on a piece of paper to some method that we can picture it.
So I could explain to you kind of the, what the county standard says, that any retaining wall that's under four feet tall does not need to be engineered. So we, it's considered landscaping. So what we did is we went in and did a wall that was three feet tall, and it was built out of pressure-treated wood. So that's, it implies with the building standard. Now, given that there's an improvement plan, any perimeter, any wall is put in on the outside perimeter of any improvement plan needs to be out of a CMU block. We weren't aware of that. We thought that this is going to fall into compliance with just the landscaping aspect. And so, when we were doing our final inspection for all of our improvements, this issue was brought up, and they said, said, "Hey, can you make an exception here? You know, it's not a big deal, this is an infill lot, it doesn't back up to any public street or anything else." They said, "No, we couldn't make the exception, you need to build, either take the wall out or build another one behind it." And so, we said, "You know what, it'll be cheaper for us to just build a secondary wall," and that's what happened.
The drainage wall was approved, it was completed and approved, there's no issue with it.
I hear the conversation here, I want to make sure we're all on the same page on which wall...
Please stand between the microphones.
Which wall we're talking about.
You need to move aside, there we go.
Okay. Are we talking about the wall that's designed along the drainage swale or the wall that's in the backyard of a house? I want to make sure we're on the same page.
It's near Haas or Haas Drive?
Yeah, that's the one that I was talking about. That's the backyard of a completely separate property that this appeal is not a part of.
Well, just an email came in relative to this project, so I'm trying to sort this out. I have quite a few drainage questions.
The backyard, I think they're talking about, this is our project up here.
Okay, so pull it out so we can see the whole... Okay.
This, our project that we're talking about, these four or five houses up here, these are the houses that are built.
Okay.
The wall you're talking about is the backyard of this back house back here, that's not even part of this project. This is a house that's been built, they graded the backyard and put in a retaining wall. So the discussion is about the backyard grading and landscaping of this home back in this corner. Project we're here today about are these homes right here. So we're kind of talking about...
Okay, well, that's helpful, it's a separate project, but...
Yeah, so I just want to, just kind of make sure everybody knows we're talking about a backyard landscaping of a home that's been built with the other map, other project. There is a retain, what I thought we were talking about was a wall that's right along this property line here for this drainage swale. So when we were talking about walls and drainage, I was, my mind was thinking the wall and that drainage swale. But the conversation's been about a wall that's in the backyard of it.
So that project in that corner doesn't have anything to do with this creek that comes through?
Has nothing to do with this project, yes.
That wasn't the que, just wait, that wasn't the question I asked. So there's a creek, and so you're dealing with the drainage, and that lot, the retaining wall we were just discussing, doesn't have anything to do with this creek?
Back, that water, it doesn't even drain that way, it drains the other direction.
Okay, on this drawing, where is Olive Drive? Please. No, no.
Olive Drive, okay, yeah. Down here, it's down here, yeah. All, yeah, the main drive's down here.
Okay, does that creek run down to Olive Drive?
This swale comes off-site, it drains through the next property and comes into Olive Drive down here. I think it's Minnesota Creek, if I'm not mistaken, is over here.
I think that's the name, yeah, okay.
And this drains into Minnesota Creek down, over at Olive Drive, further south of the property.
Yeah, so I guess the questions I have about that, I'm going to ask, what are resources, because there's, I don't believe it's part of this project. It just says that, but it does say that the plan proposed by developers has water runoff feeding into the existing drainage channel on 7833 Olive, and there's evidently, according to this homeowner, some problems with the drainage that they think will be exacerbated by this project. So have you, are you familiar with this concern?
I don't know what particular piece of property he, does he live here? I don't know where...
On Olive Street?
Yeah, if he fronts Olive Street here, there's, there are some homes there, this swale runs down between the houses and, you know, it's a standard... This swale runs down between the houses and, you know, it's a standard swale.
Let's get a better exhibit, please. There you go.
Michael Peterson, Water Resources. So this map here is the overall watershed. The project site is right here. This is the upstream watershed.
Okay.
And the drainage that you're seeing here is running, is going to run this way.
Okay, you need to push your map in a little bit so we can see it.
So this, this path here runs effectively through here.
And where's Olive Street?
It's to the south. And it's tying, this proposed channel is going to tie into the downstream existing ditch at the same point it does currently. I'll show you that on the existing condition map. This is the site. This is the existing path of the drainage swale through the lot. This is the proposed realignment of the drainage. Comes in and leaves the property at the same spots. It just takes a different path within the project site.
Okay. And just to possibly correct something I said earlier, I think I referred to it as a creek. And it's a swale that has water only when it's been raining.
Correct. It's a swale further downstream is Minnesota Creek, bird.
Okay.
This shed gets a little bit larger.
Okay. Are you, I know you're the department director, so you probably wouldn't be, but are you familiar with the complaints about Minnesota Creek being blocked and streets flooding and that sort of thing?
I've seen some of the correspondence that have been submitted. And in particular, the last two winters, that wouldn't be surprising at all, given the intensity of rainfall that we experienced. The drainage study that staff reviewed for the project shows nominal change in the peak runoff in a hundred-year flow pre and post-project. So as far as exacerbating that condition, the drainage study doesn't identify any change to that.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Issues with trees going down, those get called into 311. And our crews would respond. There may be, I think there's a specific concern with a root ball that may still be in the creek. That's causing some concern as far as erosion. We can take another look at that. But that has, that's downstream of this project site.
Yeah, well, it just came in with this application and was suggesting that the development may cause a larger problem. So maybe I can have a discussion with you offline about this. And the neighbor evidently, I don't think, did call 311 to have the tree removed. But then there's something about a swimming pool, too. So we can talk about that later. But so your statement is this realignment of this swale is not going to cause any additional drainage problems?
The alignment as proposed provides a longer flow time through the property and allows for water to stay on the property longer such that when it reaches the downstream end, there's no increase in the peak flow in the hundred-year event. That is the standard that we measure drainage impacts from.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That helps me a lot. Three separate issues.
Before, Donald, it was.
Yeah, just before Michael leaves, can I ask, just on your point about retaining it because you slow the movement of water. So is there any retention that occurs with this project? Because if you channelize it, again, I'm not an engineer, but I've sat through enough of these hearings over the years that, you know, you basically now are converting the flow that might be otherwise overland release or spread out and then end up in the same point of discharge off the property. So here, by creating a channel, you're confining to that. That's where it runs to naturally. But what about holding some of that? To your point, using the hundred-year flow? Well, there's a lot of events that are hundred-year events that, you know, that can be pretty impactful to areas, particularly when you've got the topography you have out here in Fair Oaks. So I guess I'm curious, Michael, are we requiring any retention at all?
No, retention is not required for this project. Again, the design of the proposed channel being wider and longer provides inline attenuation, if you will. There's not a retention basin. That's not a requirement that we can place on a project. That's not within the standards of the county for this scale of project. The design of the proposed channel identifies the additional volume within that channel so that you have the flow slowing down. It's in a somewhat wider cross-section so that it delays the timing of the peak to the downstream end.
Okay, when you say wider, though, but are you not confining it, though? You're confining, you may have, right now, it could seek its level until it releases to the property to, you know, Jason.
You're going from natural swale to a deeper, you've got an improved flow line for this, for this channel versus the existing swale. So you've got a little bit deeper. You've got a longer path. So the net result is you've got a bit more volume to attend to.
So is this natural soils or is it, is it a concrete channel?
Yes, it's going to be natural.
It'll be natural soil. So you still have the ability to percolate some of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you said it would help with drainage, which might take some of the water out of Minnesota Creek, from my view.
Yeah.
Okay. And then another concern related to drainage was that it might affect existing homes on the downstream side. And during heavy rain events, they're saying they have small streams running through backyards. But this project wouldn't have created that problem, so.
Again, yes, the impacts identified from this project would not be able to contribute significantly at all to that existing condition. And again, in any given winter, we can always have a storm that's going to fill Minnesota Creek, fill the culverts. Because they are designed to, you know, a certain capacity. Minnesota Creek is more or less a natural channel. So it, you know, it is not at all unsurprising. Would be expected that it would flow full during heavy rains.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any further questions for me?
Are you going to be the person who apply, that's going to deal with the sidewalk question?
Well, yeah, as far as the conditions, we anticipated to appeal any improvement requirements on New York. But if the board wishes to make that a condition.
No, no, I just, you wouldn't have any objection if I make that part of the conditions.
In fact, we were hoping, we wanted to keep the street-looking rule like it does now. So that's our hope. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the appellant? Okay, I have no more questions from the board. So I will take public testimony at this time. Deborah Ave LaLamont.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Deborah Ave LaLamont, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
It appears that a lot of you have read my letter, but I'm going to go ahead and read it for everyone to hear. Honorable members of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, I am requesting the tentative subdivision map and a special development permit be denied for the following reasons. This is not a standalone project. It is one of two properties on continuous lots with a total of 10 single-family homes using a private drive. I seriously doubt, I doubt this project would have been approved had it been proposed as a single development. The granting of a special development permit to allow more than two lots to be served by a private drive does not take into consideration that 10, not 5, single-family homes will be accessing this private drive. I've lived here for 20 years, and I can assure you, it will and has made our neighborhood less safe for walkers, existing neighbors, and has reduced our quality of life. Additionally, I have the following concerns. I request that the existing street frontage on New York Avenue remain the same in the front of this property and not be developed with sidewalks or curbs. This will help maintain the rural country feel of our neighborhood. A review of the drainage plans for the property shows significant changes to the current water easement. The initial county drainage easement begins at Sunset Avenue to the north of this property. My home is to the north of this property, and I have a drainage easement. It continues through the backyards of each property on the east side of New York Avenue, continuing through the property, through the project property to Olive Avenue. My concern is possible flooding of existing homes. And there should be a plan for a sump pump and drain pipes to protect from possible flooding. During heavy rain events, we have small streams running through our backyards which could result in flooding if the water cannot flow freely through the properties. I thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, we have a question.
Deborah? Did, sorry, did you listen to the engineers talk about the drainage? And do you understand it?
I understand it, but I know that water follows the path of least resistance. So I don't know how you're going to change the flow into a small area and make sure the water goes there. It may back up, because it may back up into the yard behind that, just before that project, and may flood them. So I'm thinking that maybe a sump pump or a drain somewhere to help that water flow through might be.
It's not always easy to understand engineers. I agree with that. But I think we'll probably have Mr. Peterson come back up and address that just to help you understand.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rebecca Friedman?
Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I'm Rebecca Friedman, Chair of the Fair Oaks CPAC, and I have been sworn. I am a Fair Oaks resident, a 13-year resident of Sacramento County, and I work as a government technology and communications consultant for LA County. Approval of this special development permit will mean that 10 homes will empty into a private street rather than the allowable two and onto a narrow public street. This includes five homes from a previously approved project. The most troubling about this project has been the lack of transparency from the applicant and developer about the intent of the project and the relationship, both personal and professional, to the previously approved project. We have found that the developer has not acted in good faith, and this includes the removal of trees, as an example. We generally support development and recognize that we have a housing crisis in California and the need for development. We also recognize that some development is inappropriate and out of character for the area. This infill project poses a risk to the character of the area as well as pedestrians and traffic safety risks and environmental, including drainage risks. The neighbors strongly oppose the project. And on behalf of the CPAC, we also oppose this special development project and county planners' additional recommendations. I would like to thank county staff. They have been very helpful throughout this process, as well as the neighbors, for being able to show up to our meetings and voice their concerns. And I thank you for your time and the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Gonzalez?
Good morning. My name is Jean Gonzalez, and I've been sworn in. Me and my husband, we live on the south end adjacent to this project. We continue to oppose the applicant request for a special development permit. As stated many times, there are already five homes from the previous approved adjacent project using this private driveway under a prior approval, which empties onto an already narrow New York Avenue. This applicant is requesting approval of another special development permit of the same private driveway. Approval of this second development permit will mean potentially 10 households will feed onto this private driveway and also emptying onto the narrow New York Avenue. We believe that 10 households with the potential of three cars per household will overburden our roadways and increase the noise in our quiet Fair Oaks neighborhood and community that we love. We have attended many meetings regarding these two projects and have asked the developers to lessen the number of households without any compromise on their part. We understand that these are to be single-family homes, but we have not seen any proposed plans from the applicant on what the homes are going to be. Infill development of this sort will change the natural and character of our beloved Fair Oaks neighborhood that we chose to live in. We would appreciate your consideration of our concerns to protect and preserve the natural and semi-rural character of our Fair Oaks community that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Barbara Roper?
I'm Barbara Roper, and I've been sworn in. And is there overhead? I could show a couple of pictures.
Yes.
Right to your right.
I could show.
We need to move the maps over there.
And if you could, when you speak, if you could pull the microphones down a little bit so we can hear you, that'd be great. Thank you.
That better?
Yes, thank you.
If you just set them here in this picture, they will go up.
Okay. I kind of made a list, but I'll probably go out of order. But you've been discussing pretty much everything I have on my list. This is a Google map of New York Avenue, of previous trees. I don't know how many are aware of what was there originally before the trees were taken out.
I think you need to turn it 90 degrees.
If you could turn it, yeah, there you go.
This way?
There you go.
Now I have what's been planted today. The previous trees, I heard, were over 100 years old. These will take a long time to get to that stage. They're historical olive trees. And if you notice, there's some black in between those trees. This is part of the new project where some asphalt's been placed between the olive trees. So I don't know why there wasn't continuous olive trees. I'm not sure what their plan is. This picture is a little bit dark, but this is on the right side of the project. But there's a wide gravel entry into the project. And then I also took a picture. I have concerns of soil. I don't know what the plan is for that. The reason I brought that to your attention is because my property butts the project in back. And I'm concerned about the elevation of the new homes. I know SIP has come out, as he mentioned, about the landscape, three-foot retaining wall. I'm not an engineer, but the first retaining wall was pressure-treated boards. Then they put, I think it's called Keystone Block, behind them. And I, what I thought I heard today, and it appears that way, that they set them on top of the soil. I always thought when you built a retaining wall, the first bricks go down below the soil so the gravel doesn't run through when there's a heavy rain. My concern is about safety, as mentioned. And also adjacent is Lono Lane from the project, from the private drive. Drainage concerns with Minnesota Creek. How will the drainage be addressed? There's going to be additional merging vehicles onto New York Avenue. And I'm not sure, they're saying, I heard, they have five parking places for guests. Is that including the residents and two guests? And where are they on the properties for the parking? I'm not quite sure, because I understood there was no parking on the street.
Can you, can you wrap it up?
Okay. Noise levels, the private drive is already serving five homes. I understood that private drive only serves two. And also, I don't want to be just awareness. Is there some way that they could be more transparent in the future when they build so the property owners kind of know what's going on and what's going to be developed? And thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there no questions from the board? All right, that's the last. All right, that's the last public comment I had. Is there anyone else that would wanted to speak? And we will come back to the board.
The applicant doesn't want to respond to anything?
Let me, let me get Supervisor Nortoli first while they're coming up.
No, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, just a question I had made for staff. The, some of the pictures that Ms. Roper showed, show different, like, looks like, you know, entryways. I don't know if those are permanent encroachments. Obviously, that's not shown on any of the maps we have. We see asphalt going in, and then show gravel coming in at their location. So I trust that the, the private drive, as you said, will serve all 10, but what about those two houses that then, the two lots that would have frontage on New York Avenue? And if, in fact, the trees have been replaced, I think the pictures showed evidence that that was a tree line that looks like a line most of the frontage of the previous property alignment there. So I guess I'm curious as to what's going to be provided for, for, if that's what's going to look like in the future? Or will those current encroachments off of the New York Avenue, will those be closed off and they'll use solely used New York? Or will those two houses take driveways off of New York Avenue? And if so, what does that do to the trees that have just been recently replanted?
So the two lots will take access off the private drive, not off New York Avenue.
And that's clear, so they have no access? So there'll be side yard fences or side yard?
There'll be side yard. We do have a condition number five requiring subsequent design review of the houses. And I would also note that condition number five requires that 24-inch box olives be planted on, in the residential yards of those two lots that front on New York. We wanted to make sure, just in case there was ever any street improvements, that there were still some olive trees there, even though I fully understand that there's no intention of doing those street improvements now.
If I could, Leanne, I want to just take you back, though, to my question, specifically to the photos that were shown.
Yeah.
Is that, because it's different than what, in, in my conversation with the proponent here yesterday, they said, you know, only take eight lots off of the private drive, that it's 10 lots, and that those encroachments that we now see will be closed off, and there will be continuous planting along those side yards for the two lot, for the two lots that have some direct adjacency to, to New York Avenue.
Well, my understanding is that the, all 10 lots are off the private drive. So if...
County standard allows for frontage on either or?
If you're, yeah, we need it on record.
I believe the county standard is you can take access on either or. I agree, it could be prohibitive because of the tree requirement and maintenance and whatnot, so most likely, access will be off of the private drives.
Well, again, I think, Madam, I appreciate, because that's what you said in my conversation with you, so I want to be clear that, you know, as we're considering this, and Supervisor Peters is going to take the lead, but I just, that, that conversation, because that's not how I understood it initially here, I heard said 10 lots, and so if all 10 lots take off the private drive, then you're going to preclude and you need to take either access, you know, preclude that access to New York Avenue and make sure that you have the trees along that alignment and whatever other fencing goes there that's appropriate and, you know, meets county standards.
I, I believe that there's also, you, you, you know, what does taking access really mean? Are you talking about vehicle access or the entrance to the property? Potentially, if the house is facing forward and it has a front door facing forward, it can take access off of New York Avenue and have a New York Avenue address, even though it has, you know, vehicular access on...
So you're talking about orientation of the houses being out towards New York Avenue, basically fronting on New York Avenue?
Potentially, yes. It's, I believe that that's a possibility that's open. It's not something that's been determined yet.
So that means there's a front yard with, so, again, I don't know what was contemplated, but I kind of heard something different from planning and maybe what you anticipated.
I don't think so. Leanne mentioned that the houses would, to main, someone mentioned, anyway, that, that to maintain the same look of the street where houses face the street, not a side yard or backyard, that the houses would face New York Avenue.
But the garages would then be off of the private drive? So the entryways?
Potenti, I mean, looking at it from a design standpoint, that would be the ideal way to do it, is to, yes, have the frontage be off of New York Avenue and then garages off the private drive.
Can I ask a follow-up, though? Does that mean that you, there's no prospect, though, of having two houses that are going to front New York Avenue with their own driveways plus the main, main private drive?
So, given that the olive trees have a three-year maintenance plan and those trees need to be preserved, it's going to be very prohibitive, most likely, that the, the garages won't be able to face New York Avenue. It's just that...
So you're saying it's a very high probability that the only vehicular access is that one private drive?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that it?
Okay.
Okay, so I wanted Mr. Peterson to come back and talk about if it's possible to explain how the water moves on that, on that swale and... Other questions that Ms. Grabbert asked?
Right, we can bring the camera.
Pardon?
Here we go.
Okay.
Yeah, so here's the, this is the grading contour map of the existing site, shows the, the contour lines.
Okay.
The water is flowing this way and this way into the existing swale. County requirements are for proposed grading to continue to follow that general pattern. The proposed channel will run, while reconfigured, it will still run from the same point A to point B. The interior drainage will still go to that new channel, and it is required to continue to pick up the upstream runoff that's north of this site in the, in the same manner that it has historically done, so that it doesn't affect the ability for this area upstream to the north to continue draining appropriately.
So the, doing it this way doesn't allow the water to stand longer than it already does?
No, it, it's providing a longer flow path, but it's not backing up, and it's, it's not creating a situation where it backs up here and sits longer upstream. That's exactly what it's not designed to do.
Okay, so it should improve the situation?
It should improve or it should have no, no impact.
Yeah, no impact or improve. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Leanne?
Did you have a specific question or...
Couple things I wanted to cover. Someone asked about design of the houses, and I think that's addressed by the Design Review Committee. Do you want to explain that?
Sure. So, and we have condition number five that requires that the homes come back through design review, because admittedly, they have not designed the homes yet. I would also point out that, so on the process for design review, that is staff-level design review. So that, it's certainly possible for the public to ask questions. Anything that's submitted to the Planning Department is public information, but it's not, per se, a hearing process where notices go out. So neighbors would have to be interacting with us in order to have access to that, because it is staff-level design review. I think one of the reasons that we've considered it very likely that the houses would be, their driveways at least, would be oriented onto the private drive is because on the map, that's actually where they've designated their guest parking, is off the private drive. Plus, by the time you have the street olive trees and the olive tree condition on the lots, it seems unlikely that, seems like it's going to be difficult to fit in driveways. So I'm sort of thinking that in the design review process, we're going to be looking at having, having the driveway access off the private drive in order to fit that all in.
Then, some questions about the private driveway. Maybe you can explain if there's any requirement about the number of houses that can be serviced on that driveway?
So the reason they're asking for a special development permit is for a review to have more than two homes off a private drive. And so that is part of the entitlement process that this has been part of.
Okay. And I believe it also says in the staff report that Department of Transportation reviewed the project, and there's no significant, there's an insignificant impact to additional traffic on New York Avenue.
That is absolutely true.
Okay. And then perhaps you could explain to visitors the entitlement process at 1.24 acres with only five houses. Maybe explain what the entitlement, which is the property rights of the landowner, how many houses could be built?
Sure. So the typical lot size is 5,200 square feet and would typically allow five houses per acre. I don't have a calculator here, and I'm not very good at math, but you could easily get more than five homes with a 5,200 square foot lot size on this. I would hazard a guess, they could have asked for as many as, what, seven or eight? Six or seven? Six or seven?
Size.
Based on the minimum lot sizes and the acreage.
Someone had indicated they hoped they would build fewer houses, and I think they have built fewer houses.
Right.
Than they're entitled to build there. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the applicant's appeal and overturn the Planning Commission's action. I want to mention in the conditions that it should be a Class C street, so no sidewalks, and no streetlights. I assume that that's part of it.
All right.
Are there any other sort of urban additions that I should be aware of that we need to take out?
I don't believe so, so we're going to revise condition 14.
Okay.
To be Class C improvements.
All right. So that is the recommended, I'm moving the recommended action plus those two additions to the conditions. And I, I would suggest to the developer that, given the communication issues that have arisen, that perhaps when you build the houses, you put a, a sign indicating a phone number where residents can call if they have any questions. We've done that before on some projects, and it seems to help with already existing residents feeling like they have a direct line. And to the residents who are here, I, if you're interested in the design review process, would suggest that you be aware of the design review meetings, and if you want to attend, that you do so.
Second.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And then just for, to Water Resources, if we can talk about this other issue that came up through this application. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the conclusion of this morning's session. We will now go into closed session. Call back to order, this October 8, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, for item 43, you are acting as the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation. Approval of previous meeting minutes, adopt fiscal year 2019-20 budget, presentation of fiscal year 2018-19 audited financial reports, and adopt a resolution setting subsequent meetings.
Good afternoon, Directors. Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. Prior resolutions of the Tobacco Securitization Authority and the Tobacco, and the Tobacco Securitization Corporation require an annual meeting that shall occur on the first Tuesday of October. Since there was no Board of Supervisor meeting scheduled on the first Tuesday of the month, this meeting will meet the annual requirement for the Tobacco Securitization Corporation. There are four items before you today. The first is the approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, which was held on September 25th, 2019, 2018, sorry.
That was a perfect staff report. Are there any questions?
Move approval.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We, please vote. Thank you very much.
Unanimous, unanimous vote.
That's the way it's done at the county, my friend.
Not saying anything this time.
Mr. Chair, do you want to take your nominations?
Yes, we'll take nominations quickly.
Okay, that's item 45.
Give Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Arshila. We'll see you next year.
Once again, flawless.
Okay, for item 45, you are continuing to November 19th, the Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council. Children's Coalition, Mr. Kennedy?
The Chiefs recommend continuing to November 5th.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please continue to November 19.
Okay, and Mr. Nortoli?
Nominate Maurice Thomas.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Maurice Thomas. I believe that's the incumbent, is it the incumbent?
Got it. And then continue the remainder to...
To the 22nd. Or go to November, please.
November 5th or 19th?
5th, please. Thanks.
Okay. Disability Advisory Commission?
Chiefs recommend continuing to November 5th.
Nortoma's Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Serna?
Please continue to November 5th.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board?
For District One, please continue till the 19th of November.
Okay, and Mr. Nortoli?
November 5th, please.
Sacramento County Youth Commission, Mr. Serna?
District One would like to reappoint Ashley June.
Okay. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Nortoli?
Holdover to October 22nd, please.
Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, Mr. Serna?
I'd like to reappoint Flojan Koffer.
Okay, and Mr. Kennedy?
Reappoint Sunny Chang.
Okay, that concludes your nominations.
Thank you, next item.
Okay, so, item 44, let me get to it, is conduct the Truth Act Forum pursuant to Government Code Section 728.3.1, response to Immigration and Customs Enforcement access to individuals in Sacramento County jails.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Brett Ferguson, Chief Fiscal Officer. As your board knows, Assembly Bill 2792, also known as the Truth Act, requires the governing body of any city or county in which a local law enforcement agency has provided U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, with access to an individual to hold at least one community forum during the year. This is the forum for Sacramento County. Public notice of this forum was provided 30 days in advance, as required by law. The purpose of the forum is to provide information to the public about ICE's access to individuals and to receive and consider public comment. The Truth Act does not require that a governing body take any action as a result of the forum, and no specific actions have been agendized for today's meeting. The Truth Act provides that, as part of the forum, the local law enforcement agency may, but is not required to, provide the governing body with data it maintains regarding the number and demographic characteristics of individuals to whom the agency has provided ICE with access, the date ICE access was provided, and whether the ICE access was provided through a hold, transfer, or notification request, or through other means. Sheriff Jones is here, and he will be speaking to your board on this matter. Last year's Truth Act Forum, held on December 17, 2018, at that meeting, your board requested that the county executive assign staff to work with the American Civil Liberties Union, or ACLU, to gather information from other counties related to the management of ICE-related databases and protocols. Staff reached out to the ACLU of Northern California, who provided some information about ICE-related data collection practices in a number of other counties, and this information is included in the agenda item before you today. Staff also asked the California State Association of Counties, or CSAC, for assistance in reaching out to other counties to collect additional information on ICE-related data collection practices. CSAC surveyed all counties in the state, but only two responded. The information they provided is also included with this agenda item. If there are no additional questions for me, I'll turn the matter over to Sheriff Jones.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Ferguson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Ms. Evans, a special thanks, because we got our PowerPoint in right under the wire, so you were able to get that up. We appreciate that. So as you know, the, this Truth Act Forum is required of any county that allows access of ICE inside of a facility, which certainly was us during the year of 2018. This will cover the entire year, although it was an interesting year for reasons I'll get into in a moment. It does not require the law enforcement official, him or herself, to be present, but I still think it's important that I present the information and be available for questions should any arise or any follow-up information that the board may require. The presentation itself will be fairly short, so it is broken down into three categories: community involvement with ICE... community involvement with ICE, and then ICE within each of our two facilities, the Sacramento County, the main jail downtown, and our Rio Custodians Correctional Center out in Elk Grove. So the first section will be the community, oh wait, I have to do this, all right. It's been a little while since I've been up here. It must have been a while since I've been up here, because I keep seeing the same picture of me, picture of me up here in the paper.
Well, can you help him?
There we go. I got it. Thank you. So, community activities being the first category. It's the same information as last year. It's important to note that we have no coordinated activities or enforcement with ICE. Whatever they do in our communities, they do so without checking with us or giving us advance notice, or asking for soliciting our help in any way. We never, out in the community, inquire about anyone's immigration status when we respond to a call for service, or if we happen upon any scene for any particular reason, whether someone's a suspect, or a victim, or a witness. That is also true of folks that get arrested and come to our jail, regardless of which agency is the arresting agency. We never inquire about someone's status when they come into our jail. We do ask if, where they were born, because there are consular notifications and legal requirements in that regard for folks that are born in a foreign country that have citizenship in another country, but even if they say they were born outside of the country, we never follow up and find out what their status, if they're here legally or not. So we would generally have no idea what percentage of, or who in our population is here legally or otherwise. Therefore, we don't track, monitor, or keep stats on folks in our jail that may be undocumented. For our Sacramento County Main Jail, as you recall, we had a contract in 2018 that expired on June 30 of that year, and was not renewed by the Board of Supervisor, renewed by the Board of Supervisors in that case. In 2018, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office received 563 immigration detainees, the I-247 form, and while we do accept them and file them, they do not impact in any way the folks' custody status, or more importantly, their ability to be released or otherwise processed through the local judicial system. So as you can see, the holds were entered and immediately canceled out due to the Trust Act of 2014. This may be difficult to see, but ICE interviews, those where ICE themselves came in to interview, to schedule an interview for our inmate population in all of 2018, including the six months where we had the ICE contract, was zero in both of our facilities. We did not have one in either facility. Contrast that with non-ICE law enforcement interviews. These are law enforcement interviews by other agencies. Every other law enforcement agency except ICE, as you can see, were pretty busy scheduling those, but none were for ICE. Now, I will say that during the six months that we did have the contract with ICE, it was quite literally an ICE jail within our jail, so they had their own staff and members on site, so we would not know if they encountered those folks and interviewed the folks in their own custody, but if they were outside of the ICE detainee population, or certainly any of our population in the final six months of 2018, they would have had to schedule with us, and none were scheduled.
Excuse me, Sheriff.
Yeah.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Sheriff. So just wanted to get a better understanding of the non-ICE law enforcement interviews. Would an example be like FBI, or DOJ, or?
All of that. Probation, our own detectives, detectives from another agency. We kind of struggled with the language a little bit. It was, we first had SB 54 interviews and non-SB 54 interviews, but it was a little bit unclear to me, so I knew it would be unclear to the folks viewing it. So it's every other law enforcement agency except ICE, the second group, so ICE has no part in those second stats at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continue.
And just for reference, in 2017, the main jail had 49 such interviews, and the Rio Custodians Correctional Center had two. On to the Rio Custodians Correctional Center. In 2018, there were a total of 384 detainees that were held at the Rio Custodians Correctional Center. That was all included in the first six months while we had the contract. Obviously, no ICE detainees the second half of the year. Contrasted to 2017, that 384 number was 1,303. The average daily population of ICE detainees while we had them was 121, which is roughly equivalent to the same average daily population while we had them in 2017. I think it was 131 or 134, something like that in 2017. And as I mentioned previously, detainees were housed in our facility only through June 30, when the contract expired and was not renewed by the Board of Supervisors. The demographic breakdown of the detainees for that, again, this is only covering that first six months while we had the contract, are as follows. I think those numbers speak for themselves.
I have a question there, Sheriff.
Yes.
So, just so I understand how the process worked, because it sounds like, going back, you had very little interaction with ICE, I mean, as far as who the people were, what their circumstances were, right? I mean, that was?
Which population are you referring to?
The ICE population.
So the folks that they had, that we were housing under contract? Yes. That's correct.
But you didn't know their race, so at some point you must have done some kind of?
Well, certainly we would have known, yeah, we would have complete, as complete of information from them as we would have any inmate.
So that information came from ICE? It's not information you gathered?
In which information?
Like, this, I'm just talking about this particular slide. This information, you gathered this yourselves as they were being put into the process, or did you get that information from ICE?
Are you talking about the total of 384 and the average daily population?
You had RCCC ICE detainees by race?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes.
So you got, I guess my point is, I'm trying to figure out how the process worked. Where is the wall between the Sheriff's Department and ICE? Because you did have some information, but you didn't have other information.
So, to be clear, we had all information. So in other words, it's not just a black hole that happens to be run by ICE.
Okay.
We ran it with our own staff. They had unfettered access to their own population, and obviously, they were under contract, so we paid per inmate, per detainee, per day, a per diem rate. So, but we, they're still in our computers, in custody in our jail, so we have every bit of information on those folks, as we do of our non-ICE detainees.
Thank you.
That they were just under contract, much like some of our state contracts that we house folks with. We have a number of different contracts and corrections, that just was one of them.
Okay. Yes.
So, a bit of a follow-up on this particular slide. Is this a list by race that the federal government gives us, or is this standardized list of various races that is used widely by our law enforcement?
It's used by the Department of Justice.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is just a demographic broken down by the, by the population of male or female, and as you can see, the entire population for the duration that we had ICE detainees was male, and no females. And that is, that's all the presentation that I had, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can that you might have.
Are there any questions of the sheriff at this time? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a number of speaker slips. I have been asked by leadership from the community to provide the first two speakers with five minutes each, which I have agreed to, and then the remainder will have our standard two minutes. So I will start by calling up Sean Riordan. The clerk can put five minutes on the clock.
Afternoon, supervisors. Thank you for allowing us this additional time to provide some information about some of our concerns with the way the Sheriff's Department is cooperating with ICE in this new legal environment where SB 54 imposes a lot of, a lot of obligations and creates a lot of prohibitions. I'm going to handle the first part of the presentation on behalf of Sacramento Immigration Coalition. Rhonda Rios Krabitz will then come up and provide some additional suggestions primarily. I would say, when we were here last year, we had almost all questions and no answers. This year, we're at a very different place, where we still have a lot of questions, particularly more acute concerning questions, I would say, about the way that the Sheriff's Department is transferring people to ICE, but we do have some answers as well, and I'm going to try to get into those. You know, we appreciate Sheriff Jones being here, but, you know, respectfully, his presentation that there's nothing to see here, I don't, I don't think accurately captures what's really going on. So, we, our top-line recommendation is that the board institute prohibition against further cooperation with ICE at the county level, and there are several reasons why. One is that, based on the data that the Sheriff's Department provided to the California Attorney General for 2018 transfers to ICE, there are a significant number of possibly illegal transfers and notifications that were made. Second reason is that we have independently verified a number of individual stories of what we are quite certain were illegal transfers. I'll get back to that in a little bit. And finally, the Sheriff's Department policies are confusing and fundamentally inconsistent with the law, and we'll get back to that briefly as well. So, we did invite Sheriff Jones to meet with the Coalition in a letter dated September 13, and outlined a lot of our concerns in that letter. We have, have not been offered the chance to meet with him. The department did respond last Thursday evening, indicating that they thought that they had allayed our concerns by making, by revising their policy, although, as I'll mention at the end, we don't, we don't think they've actually done that. So we still would welcome the opportunity to meet with the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Jones to discuss these concerns further. So, to get at what's going on here and what should be of great concern to the board, I think we need to talk about two aspects of the California Values Act SB 54 that are sort of the linchpin of restoring trust between California immigrant communities and law enforcement. And one is this notification rule. Fundamentally, a law enforcement agency in California, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, is not allowed to notify ICE of when it's releasing somebody unless very specific criteria are met. Those are the criteria set out in Section 7285.5. Related to that, the Sheriff's Department is not allowed to transfer anybody to ICE unless the same criteria are met. So the criteria are outlined very specifically, and there ought not to be any confusion about what those are. In part, there's an absolute prohibition against notifying ICE or transferring somebody based on a simple misdemeanor conviction, and we'll get back to why that matters in a moment. Now, the Sheriff's Department provided the Attorney General information that it transferred a number of people based on charges that appear that they might be simple misdemeanors. This is not our interpretation, this is just looking at the penal code provisions that were listed out in the transfer information that the Sheriff's Department provided to the AG, and being able to recognize those as simple misdemeanors. So by the Sheriff's own data, it appears that there were likely a number of transfers based on simple misdemeanors in 2018, all of which would have been unlawful under SB 54. We filed a subsequent Public Records Act request on September 24, seeking additional information to try to, to get in more detail at what might have been going on there. We have not received a response yet. Okay. One of our big concerns about illegal transfers coming out of this information is that the Sheriff's Department indicated initially that 26 transfers were for people convicted of a misdemeanor DUI. In their email last Thursday, the Sheriff's Department reported that this was an oversight and that those transfers were actually based on a felony DUI statute. Okay? It's a little bit questionable, just based on comparing those 26 purported felony transfers to transfer data across the state. For example, Los Angeles County, which has a population six times bigger than Sacramento County, had far fewer transfers for the same vehicle code offense. But even, even taking the Sheriff's Department at its word that that's correct, there's a big mystery, and that's because we verified several transfers in 2018 based on simple misdemeanor DUI convictions. We're continuing to investigate these stories about illegal transfers, but essentially, by allowing these programs of notification and transfer to occur without oversight supervision, or meaningful data collection, apparently, the county's creating conditions where it might have a massive legal liability on its hands, in terms of illegal transfers and notifications. And it may be that some of these things are happening in the shadows, where, you know, there's a, there's an official policy, and then there's an informal policy in terms of how things are actually done, and that, that again, would be really problematic. I know I'm basically out of time, so I'll just note.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks very much for not cutting me off. There's also this issue of the policies themselves inviting violations of SB 54. And again, we'd welcome the opportunity to work with the Sheriff's Department to try to refine those policies. They have not implemented our recommendations, which are exclusively designed to bring the policy into alignment with what the law requires.
Thank you. But before you leave, is there any question from the board?
I have a question.
Mr. Serna?
So you've cited the legislation that, the legislative context for this several times. What is, what is SB 54 say specifically about what happens if there's a violation of any, you know, element of the statute? What's the recourse?
SB 54 doesn't, doesn't create explicitly a cause of action to sue, but I know that there are a number of tort claims percolating through the administrative and court process throughout the state, where the people making those claims have said that by being unlawfully transferred, that that constitutes several, several torts under state law that are actionable. There's the bigger issue of, you know, if there's a pattern in practice of violating the law, then obviously, there's the possibility for somebody who's aggrieved by that to file an injunctive relief lawsuit to try to stop that from happening.
And then, in your, in your opinion, is the county then liable then for any civil action that's brought against the Sheriff's Department?
These actions that have been filed under an administrative tort preservation posture so far, and then that are making their way into the courts, are against the county as well. I don't want to, you know, sort of start getting into what precisely I think the county's liability might be, but it, it ought to be a concern, in my opinion, for the board.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
I wonder if the sheriff can respond to, to these, I guess, allegations.
Well, that sounds pretty salacious and scary, but the reality is, we've made no illegal notifications, there's nothing operating in the shadows. What he is referring to, which he was corrected on last week, that's a little bit disingenuous for him to come up and say otherwise, was that last year, as we were approaching this hearing, we had to get our information on which charges were given custody over to ICE, from ICE itself. When we got the list, they were listed as DUI, and so through human error, we inadvertently reported that to the Department of Justice in January as the misdemeanor section of 23152 of the vehicle code, but we went back and checked every single one of them, and they are all, in fact, under 23153 or other felony sections of the DUI provisions, which is permissible to communicate with, cooperate with, transfer custody of, whatever you want to say, to ICE. There have been no unverified transfers, either formal or informal, that did not comply with appropriate law. Although, he keeps mentioning individual stories and verified accounts, what I am not hearing is anyone specific. If Mr. Riordan has specific examples of folks that he would like me to investigate, believe me, I will investigate it, and I will either report back here, and certainly for my own edification, I will get to the bottom of what is, what did, or what did not happen. But just to stand up here and say there are verified and individual documented cases without putting them in the letter so we could actually verify them, and then just to stand up here and allude that there's some sort of, some cloud of disparaging conduct on the part of the Sheriff's Office, I don't think is, it's either fair, and I certainly don't think it's valid. So, if there are verified information, I would ask him, or the ACLU, to provide that information so we could research it and get an answer for all of us. information so we could research it and get an answer for all of us, and not just kind of anecdotal, unverified information. Thank you.
I have one more question for the Sheriff. Sheriff Jones, is it legal then, even though the county does not have a contract with ICE, is it legal for you to communicate with ICE?
So, there's a couple of different aspects in answering that question. Number one is, ICE can be provided with any information that's available publicly. So, for example, whether, like, our database of folks that are in custody is public, folks that are sentenced and have a release date, that information is public, so they can get that information. If it's not available publicly, then they fall into one of two categories, one of which we can communicate with ICE about, one we cannot. So, if they fall under the criteria of SB 54, where they are of appropriate crime, either serious or violent, or fit within the enumerated crimes and criteria, then yes, we can communicate with ICE, and that includes notifying them on their release, we could transfer custody of them, and I believe that occurred, I want to say 99 times. I think that's right, but it could be one or two the other way. That occurred with qualifying crimes 99 times in 2018. If it does not fit squarely within the criteria of that legislation, we cannot and do not have any communication with ICE at all, not about anything, not about their release date, not about, you know, wink, wink, they might be getting out. We absolutely and fully comply with the law. It makes better stories to allege that we don't, and that we somehow have this sort of, you know, backdoor dealing with ICE, but the reality is, it just simply isn't true. The confusing policy that he states, the original letter that he had issues and complaints about, referred to our old policy, which was rewritten in June or July for, frankly, it was for clarification and ease of use for our own staff, so they weren't as likely to make inadvertent mistakes, because there are some confusing aspects to the law. We provided a copy of that, along with the fact, back to Mr. Riordan last week, by email, and mailed him a hard copy, I believe. But nonetheless, he got it last week, saying that a lot of the concerns that he'd raised relative to our old policy had been addressed in the new policy. Not all of them had, I'll be quite candid, because his reading of what the law requires in terms of a policy is different than mine. So, reasonable minds are just going to differ on whether the policy requires things that I don't believe that it does. The one area that I will say that might have some merit, that we are going to be looking into, is he suggested that we should offer the additional languages of Mung and Russian. Currently, the statute requires six different languages, but it also requires, in addition to that, under 128552 of the Health and Safety Code, any other languages for which the county population of a particular language-speaking group is 3,000 or more, or any one ZIP code within that jurisdiction is 1,000 or more, or any cumulative two contiguous ZIP codes are 1,500 or more. And I would suspect, and we got our original 10 languages for our advisement that we use now, I believe, if I recall correctly, from the registrar of voters, because I think it's the same sort of criteria used for how to put out ballots in different languages. But I would suspect, as I stand here without knowing, that we, my guess is, the Russian-speaking population, the Mung-speaking population, both exceed those 3,000 criteria, and of course, our census may indicate even more. So, and he has offered to help us with the translation, so if, you know, we will certainly be looking into that in terms of increase in the language availability and making sure that we are complying with that aspect and being inclusive with all the languages that the law requires.
And finally, is it safe to assume that someone who's looking from the outside in could actually maybe be making assumptions, but they don't really have, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, information that is not public information, that they don't know, so they could be making assumptions regarding the activities that go on between you and ICE that is not necessarily a good assumption, because they don't have the information?
Certainly, but this is obviously a highly charged and political issue, and so, you know, oftentimes, in this arena, it's about controlling the narrative. And as I say quite frequently, that if you resort to emotional appeals and name-calling, the facts generally are not on your side. So, I'm here to present facts, and I'm happy to work with, you know, I've set them up with my executive staff, my chief of corrections, and certainly, I'm happy to meet with them, but frankly, it'd be more productive for them to meet with her and other members of my executive staff that are the boots on the ground, actually doing the work, that can provide the answers that they seek. And I think that we have gone a long way towards doing, taking care of some of the concerns they had. I can almost guarantee you, as I stand here, we will never take care of all of the concerns that they have, because I think, you know, the ACLU on this issue and the Sheriff's Office come from fundamentally different places. But I can assure every one of you standing up here, as they're throwing out the specter of litigation and liability exposure, that we are 100% complying with the Trust Act and the Truth Act and every other piece of legislation that bears any weight of obligation on the Sheriff's Office and the manner in which we run our corrections.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I didn't have a question for Sheriff. I did want to ask Mr. Riordan something, though, it kind of pertains, so if I could—
You want Mr. Riordan?
Yeah, if I could, Sheriff, I want to ask Mr. Riordan. And it goes to a point that both of you spoke to, but I, you've indicated, and sheriffs responded to this about, you said you've had verified cases. I gather from what the sheriff has said, you haven't provided either documentation behind that, or, so is there, is some reason that problematic to do that? Because if you have solid verification, and he's willing to look into it, then I think that information needs to be shared. I mean, again, I don't, you know, I don't know why, if you bring that forward, you wouldn't, you know, present that to the sheriff and/or his executive staff, and then, you know, and, I guess, attempt to re-verify it, you know?
Yeah, it's a fair question, Supervisor Natoli, and I think that's something that we'll discuss coming out of this meeting. You know, one concern has been that ICE has engaged in apparent retaliation against people who have spoken out. There was a Truth Act forum in the Central Valley where somebody was arrested within 24 hours of speaking at the forum. So, you know, people who have been previously arrested by ICE, released on bonds, and are now trying to keep their head down, can be concerned about that kind of thing. But I think we're going to have a conversation about it and figure out if that's something that we can do with the people that we have worked with on this.
Let me just offer a thought, Sean. It may be that, again, you know, through, you know, obviously ACLU, you know, whether you represent those folks or not, you know, through any litigation, but, you know, just, as you put on the record today, obviously, the sheriff is willing to take the information. Mr. Ferguson, you know, in the County Exec's Office has, you know, sought information from other jurisdictions. Maybe there's a way to, again, I think, provide, you know, some level of assurance that, you know, any concerns folks might have that have provided verification, that you folks are comfortable with, and relative to making the statement you made, a way to, you know, get that information in a fashion that certainly the sheriff would, you know, honor the confidentiality of it, obviously, maybe public record behind some of this, if there are, you know, offenses and arrests and so forth. But again, I would hope that we could get, you know, the information to the parties that could then view it and then determine, you know, certainly, the accuracy as best people can, based upon, obviously, either, you know, signed statements or, you know, other information that you have available to you and the folks that you've been, you know, that you represent, at least in the sense that you've made the statement here today. So, I think that's important for all of us to know, so.
Absolutely. And one other, just brief note on that, I mean, I do think, you know, the Sheriff's Department has the ability to undertake its own internal investigations. Obviously, from our perspective, if there was, you know, an objective third-party body, you know, a strong Inspector General, for example, that could look into those things, that would also be exceptionally desirable.
Okay. Well, let me ask this, then, just, I mentioned Mr. Ferguson, and he probably doesn't want to be in the middle of the crossfire here, but we don't have an Inspector General in place as of yet, and, but you have been, your offices, Brett, have been helping with gathering information from the last Truth Forum. It may be with regards to this point, because I think it's an important point, you can maybe be the intermediary that helps to, you know, provide the information. Obviously, the sheriff will have to do their own independent verification, but I would ask, since we don't have an IG, either that or maybe through the Chair's Office, to assist in that regard, so particularly on that point, I think it's an important point, so, I don't— Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Ronda Rios Kravitz, again, you have five minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Good afternoon.
Let me see if I know how to work this one. It goes on top, or, there it is. First and foremost, I'm here today representing the Sacramento Immigration Coalition, and we believe the county of Sacramento would be better served by a more robust, bright line separating the activities of the Sacramento Sheriff's Office from those of ICE. To that end, we are respectfully submitting five recommendations for the Sheriff and one for the Board of Supervisors.
Dr. Kravitz, could you pull the left mic down a little bit, so we, there we go, so we can hear you. There we go.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, regarding recommendation one, the practice of publicly posting inmate information poses a serious threat to the effectiveness of SB 54's prohibitions on when an LEA, a law enforcement agency, can allow ICE to take custody of an individual. Therefore, we are recommending that the Sacramento Sheriff's Department adopt policy and language of the Sacramento, of the San Francisco Police Department, and that we would say Sacramento Sheriff's Department employees are not authorized to provide the following access or information, and that would be access to inmates in jail, access to computers and/or databases, their logs, booking and arrest documents, release dates and times, and home or work contact information. Again, this is a policy already in place in San Francisco. Recommendation two, this requires ICE to operate with judicial oversight and imposes a greater degree of accountability. We are recommending that they prohibit ICE agents from accessing individuals in county facilities without a criminal warrant or a legitimate law enforcement purpose unrelated to immigration enforcement. This is a policy in San Francisco and in Santa Clara. Recommendation three, it is much easier for an LEA to receive a judicial warrant or probable cause determination compared to searching the individual's criminal history and ensuring that any convictions match with the criteria of the Trust Act. Operating with judicial oversight imposes a greater degree of accountability. This is the policy of the Los Angeles Police Department. So, again, prohibiting all custodial transfers to ICE except when there is a judicial warrant or prior conviction of a federal criminal investigation. Recommendation four, the primary purpose of a joint task force must be unrelated to immigration enforcement. JTFs carry the potential to result in arrests based on civil immigration violations. Therefore, this is a training recommendation, which would require officers who participate in any joint task force to sign an acknowledgement stating that they understand the department's policies in regard to SB 54. It requires such an acknowledgement encourages individuals to engage and ensure that they actually understand their department's policies and their obligations. It increases accountability in the sense that if an error is made, then the sheriff can hold his officers responsible, as they will have formally acknowledged their understanding of their obligations. And three, it presents an opportunity for the Sheriff's Department to proactively educate officers and encourages the development of transparent and clear policies. Recommendation five, it really facilitates public transparency and accountability with respect to the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. This one, the department would disclose through a publicly accessible website on the Sheriff's website and on the County Board of Supervisors' website, on a basis that's consistent with state law, the following data, annual reports to the Department of Justice, if applicable, monthly reports reflecting the number of immigration-related transfers to ICE, and the offenses justifying the transfer, monthly reports on new visa applications submitted for certification, and the percentage certified by the Sacramento, should be Sheriff's Department, and quarterly reports on the number of civil immigration detainers and criminal enforcement requests received from ICE, as well as in the number of immigrants-related transfers to ICE, in effort to increase transparency and accountability. And this is really important, as we do not have an OIG, it's very difficult to get any kind of stats from the Sheriff's Department. And finally, we have one recommendation for the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and that one is that we feel is critically important that we create an independent civilian immigrant oversight commission, and this commission would help ensure violations of SB 54 are independently investigated, it would ensure transparency and accountability, and even with an OIG, there remains a need for a high-level body of non-political leaders who are held in high regard by the community. Without subpoena power, this board would be ineffective. So, this, we are recommending that it be comprised of seven commissioners. They would work with the Inspector General to review the issues. This, excuse me, while I move this to this one. The Oversight Committee will review the Sacramento Sheriff's Department's compliance with SB 54 and department policies. The Oversight Committee will help ensure violations of SB 54 are independently investigated and reviewed, and determine consequences for failing to follow SB 54. It would establish a formalized complaint procedure for immigrants, and the commission will examine how the Sheriff's Department uses county resources on administrative and/or personnel costs involved in tracking and responding to ICE civil immigration detainers, and would house all data related to immigration enforcement collected by the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. We feel that at a time when the federal administration has been overtly hostile to immigrant communities and has ramped up arrests, detentions, and deportations, it is imperative that the Sacramento County residents are confident that the Board and the Sheriff are in full compliance with SB 54, and that as a county, we demonstrate with our actions, not just words, that we welcome and protect immigrant rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kravitz. Can you make sure that the clerk has, we have a copy of that? We do, thank you very much. Are there any questions, Dr. Kravitz, at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And our next speaker is Dr. Rita Cepeda.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
I'm here, excuse me, Sacramento allergies.
Here, would you like some water, Dr. Cepeda?
I think I'll be okay, thank you. I'm here on behalf of some member of Sacramento Immigration Coalition, and as a co-founder of Step Up Sacramento—
Let's not cut into your time with coughing, so we'll just give you some water here. There you go.
On October 5th, 2018, exactly one year ago, the Sacramento Immigration Coalition sent a letter to this board. The opening sentence in the letter read as follows, quote, "The Sacramento Immigration Coalition is concerned about the recommendation by Sheriff Jones to remove Rick Brazil from his position as IG in Sacramento. Profound fractures in trust have arisen between the community members, particularly communities of color, and the Sacramento County Police Department," end of quote. Here we are again, one year later, and those same profound fractures have only deepened. A situation made more untenable, given the current state of distrust and betrayal currently being played out at the national level in the midst of a presidential impeachment inquiry. At the crux of our national disgrace and our local state of affairs are the issues of transparency, balance of power, and yes, whether the citizenry has a right to hold their elected officials accountable. And similar to our national tragedy, is the maximum that no one is above the law. On December 4th, 2018, this body held a meeting similar to this one to look into Sheriff Jones', quote, "lockout" of County Inspector General Rick Brazil. The sheriff said to you that while he supported such a position, he warned this body not to go too far in trying to provide oversight of an independently selected official. In fact, the sheriff said, and I quote, "An elected official should be free to do the people's business without outside undue influence." I ask you, does this sound like the same script now being followed at the national level? Again, quoting— Again, quoting Sheriff Jones on that day, he stated, "I've been described as a rogue authoritarian, a dictator, a mini-Trump, and all because I want to allow independent oversight of the Sheriff's Department. This seems strange to me," he said. "No other sheriff departments in the state has oversight that is being contemplated here." And here's the point of my presentation. In fact, several counties throughout the state have such oversight bodies. The outcome has already proven positive, and the law enforcement work of their officers has not been hampered. In fact, the safety and security of those communities has improved, and dare I say, the trust between community and law enforcement is on the mend. I have here a brochure...I don't have it with me, it's on my chair, from the largest county in California, Los Angeles. They have established a civilian oversight commission.
Can you wrap up, Dr. Sepeda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Their motto is working on transparency and accountability, and I should say to you that they have family assistance program, mental health evaluation teams, use of body worn cameras, cooperation, reviewing policies regarding cooperation with immigration and customs enforcement, and Prison Rape Elimination Act implementation. As Tip O'Neill once said, "All politics is local," and that is because we are a microcosm of policy that guide our nation, so I would urge you to consider our request. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shereen Miles.
Hi, my name is Shereen Miles. I'm with Sacramento Act. I am a member of the Immigration Coalition, and I have been asked to read a letter from the Jewish Community Relations Council. You should have a copy of it before you.
We do have a copy of that, yes.
Good. So basically, the Sacramento Jewish Community Relations Council advocates on behalf of issues of vital importance to the Jewish community in the greater Sacramento area. The organization co-signed a letter September 4th that was sent to Sheriff Jones by a number of allied community organizations regarding the sheriff's compliance with the California Values Act. Since that compliance is the subject of this forum today, we wish to restate the continued urgency for the sheriff and the county Board of Supervisors to address the important issues raised by your community. The September 4th letter detailed a number of recommendations that the Sheriff's Department should follow to resolve potential violations of the California Values Act. The JCRC urges the sheriff to work with us, the community-based organizations, to fully implement all these recommendations as quickly as possible, including eliminating transfers of individuals to Immigration and Customs Enforcement unless they are clearly authorized under SB 54 and related statutes, and revising written department policies and related trainings as detailed in the letter. Most of all, we hope that the county and sheriff's department will end their engagement with ICE and the ability of ICE agents to enter county jails immediately. Members of the JCRC, the Jewish Federation of the Sacramento Region, and the broader Jewish community would have liked to have participated in this important community forum today. However, they were unable to do so in person as they are preparing for the holy and solemn Day of Yom Kippur. The organization hereby encourages the board to reference the ADL's Calendar of Observances for all of the major U.S. faiths when scheduling future events such as this one, which is annual and very important to our community. Yom Kippur is also known as the Day of Repentance, when Jewish people are commanded to reflect and seek forgiveness from others, and for God for each transgression or mistake we've committed throughout the last year, and to truly repent by committing to not repeat the offense. We hope that county leaders and the Sheriff's Department commit to ending an involvement with ICE and rebuilding the shattered trust with our community. And that is signed by Bruce Palmer, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm having trouble reading this, so I'll go with initials. CMP. Is there Carlos Monta...
Oh, he's not here right now.
Not here, okay.
Sorry.
Good. Did not hear me butcher the name. Kalen Kipling-Mohadadi.
That's you.
Well, don't laugh, I did the best I could.
No, you're great.
Oh, thank you.
I didn't even get close. Okay.
I'm Kalen Kipling-Mohadadi. I'm with Sacramento Immigration Coalition, CARE Sacramento, and also the Campaign for Immigrant Detention Reform. And I have a few questions on a very specific thing, and that is, we want to address the use of license plate reader technology. That worries us, and it worries the community. The fiscal year 2018 to 2019 budget said that the Sheriff's Department has been working toward actively developing and implementing a comprehensive network of license plate reader technology. In light of that, Sheriff Jones, can you confirm that the Sacramento Sheriff's Department is not sharing this data with ICE or any other DHS agency? This should be able to be answered under the TRUTH Act.
I'd have to check.
Well, yeah, we'll...
We use LPRs extensively.
If a board member wants to follow up, but we can't have debate from...
Sure. No, that's fine, yes.
Okay.
I will continue to the second one. Can you change your current policy explicitly stating that your office will not share data with ICE or any other DHS agency? Those are our two main questions regarding that, for you. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Diana Campos.
My name is Diana Campos, and I'm a community leader representing the Sacramento Immigration Coalition, Sacramento Act, and the faith community. And we are here to ensure that the faith community is heard, and that the Sheriff's Department remains accountable and transparent. As a former undocumented resident and DACA recipient in Sacramento, I can honestly say that we are not murderers or rapists. We are a community that is here and that has lived in fear, and I speak from experience when I say that I have lived in fear when driving back and forth home to work or to school. And though I am now a resident in the Sacramento area, many of our families and in the faith community live in this fear when they hear that new license plate readers and technology is being used. So we have the same question to Sheriff Jones. If he has any databases or surveillance data that is shared with ICE, we would like to know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Courtney Hanson.
All right, we're hanging out all day today.
Yeah.
I do find it ironic that the sheriff wants to accuse attorneys and civil rights advocates of trying to control a narrative while making shows like Jail Birds. And like most things with the sheriff, it looks like we do have more questions than answers. I think it's a great question, why does the Sheriff's Office allow ICE agents to access Sacramento County jails for civil immigration purposes when most of these ICE requests are voluntary? I think it's also not a secret to us why he would allow that. We've known for a long time that Sheriff Scott Jones has ties to groups like FAIR, the Federation for American Immigration Reform, which has been documented as a white supremacist and anti-immigrant organization. What we know is that Sheriff Scott Jones thinks humans can be aliens, thinks American equals white. And being in this room is reminding me...this was back in 2011, but I was inside Sacramento County Jail, and I witnessed a young woman being explained in English, when she only spoke Spanish, that she was being deported. And luckily, somebody in my cell was bilingual and was able to translate for her, which I'm not an attorney, but I would imagine that you must have to explain to somebody in their language, especially if it's Spanish, that they're about to be taken away from their three-year-old son, and that they won't have the ability to see him. And that's just something I'll never forget witnessing. And so I'm here today, you know, I'm part of Decarcerate Sacramento. There's clearly ongoing issues in multiple camps with oversight. Oversight should not be seen as a threat. Sheriff Scott Jones should not be so opposed to basic oversight, especially when we see it happen in other counties. Xenophobia and fear-mongering does not need to be part of our public safety here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Courtney. Sanya Nadador. I'll take close.
Hi, Sandhya Nadador, on behalf of the California Immigrant Policy Center. CIPC also works very closely with the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. Today, I just wanted to briefly review how the department, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, fails to comply, echoing a lot of the concerns that have been brought up throughout this forum, and provide recommendations to ensure that all counties in Sacramento...I'm sorry, all of Sacramento County and all communities in this county can continue to thrive. First, the department continues to allow ICE unfettered access to Sacramento County jails. Their current policy states that ICE agents can review an inmate's custody file and have access to the jail information management system to investigate violations of federal law. Under the California Values Act, law enforcement is prohibited from sharing an individual's personal information with federal immigration authorities unless that information is publicly available. Therefore, this information cannot be shared with ICE. Second, Sacramento Sheriff's Department is actively notifying ICE of California law enforcement telecommunications system hits and immigration warrants, leaving it to ICE to act upon that information. Under the California Values Act, once again, law enforcement agencies are prohibited from using local resources for immigration enforcement purposes. The fact that the department is using staff time and county dollars to notify ICE of people who they think could be of interest goes against state law. We ask that the Sacramento Sheriff's Department share how they screen for protections under SB 54, and the basis for which they transfer individuals into ICE custody. It is vital for the Sacramento Sheriff's Department to track this data and to share it with the public. We request that the department share monthly aggregated data that outlines the number of ICE requests the department receives per month, how the department responded, and the basis for their response. In addition, the department can also share the information related to transfers and participation in joint task forces. When law enforcement agencies are entangled with ICE, it creates a chilling effect, making each of us less safe. For these reasons, we would like to ask the following. One, a meeting with Sheriff Jones to ask additional questions related to the Sacramento Sheriff's Department involvement with ICE and to share our concerns. And two, to work with the Sacramento Board of Supervisors to create an oversight mechanism of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department to include the Office of the Inspector General and a civilian oversight commission with subpoena power. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nadador. I have one question. Without going down a rabbit hole of too much, because it's beyond this body and this hearing, but...so if the provisions of SB 64 are followed...
54.
...and there's kind of that firewall of what they can and cannot do, does that satisfy your organization, or is there still needed further legislation, in your opinion?
There is compliance with SB 54, and then, of course, we would also request that the department not...that the department stop transfers to ICE altogether, as this is voluntary, but our first request is compliance with SB 54.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yoshi Nori Himmel. Good afternoon.
Members of the board. I'm Yoshi Nori Himmel, and thank you for that good reading job on my difficult name.
Deputy's is easy.
I would, having heard the dialogue here and the many questions that have been brought up by credible witnesses having to do with the Sheriff Department's practices, I heartily concur with the creation of an independent civilian oversight commission in the area of immigrant treatment with subpoena power, and hope that that will be part of the mechanism for oversight of the sheriff and immigration practices. I also think that the five other specific recommendations by the immigration advocates here are generally well-taken. I'm not a member of the bodies that have been mentioned. For identification, I'm the president of the Asian Bar Law Foundation. And some of you may have become aware of the programs that we've put on in the last several years, public programs in Sacramento, of an educational nature on topics having to do with law and the Asian Pacific Islander community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Himmel. And the Asian Bar does great work in the communities. Thank you. That's the last card I have. Is there anyone in the public that did not turn in a card that would like to speak? Okay. Then we'll bring it back to the board, and Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. If my colleagues will indulge me, there were a number of recommendations that were made, and I just wondered if the sheriff wants to respond to any of them, all of them, in terms of willingness or ability to work with the advocates that have raised these concerns and issued these recommendations to implement them or not?
Sure. You know, obviously, as I stated before, this is an emotionally and oftentimes politically charged issue. I certainly understand and can appreciate that my position on some of these issues are different than some of the folks sitting behind me. Not that either one of ours is not genuinely held, I can certainly appreciate their viewpoint, we just come from different positions. I, as a law enforcement official charged with keeping a million and a half people safe and trying to do all that I can for that, and then, of course, as for the constituencies that they represent and they're, you know, following their passions, I can certainly understand that there will be a disparity of where we are on some of these issues. That being said, I can once again completely assure you that we comply with all facets of the Trust Act, TRUTH Act, every other piece of legislation. While there were a lot of allegations that we do not, that there were general and specific instances of times that we did not, I would, as I offered previously, I would welcome the opportunity for some specifics, some specific examples of either generally or policy-wise what we're not doing that gives rise to their belief that we're not complying with the Trust Act, or TRUTH Act, or specific examples, in the case of particular examples of maybe instances where these folks feel that we did not. To that extent, I'm always wide open to get that. I'm not naive enough to think that we do everything perfectly, that we don't make mistakes in human error, but we do need those specifics to look into and to be able to introspect and try and improve ourselves going forward. In response to your other question, I'm perfectly willing to meet with any group that wants to meet with me. As a matter of fact, I had standing meetings with Sacramento Act in the past for the first several years of my tenure as sheriff. In fact, they were the only group that I had standing meetings with. It became untenable for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is, I think there was a complete lack of trust that developed on some specific issues on both of our parts, but more to the point, in my dealing with them, there were some things that I felt they were disingenuous and dishonest about. So I canceled those standing meetings. But I did say, in canceling those standing meetings, and I'll reaffirm it today, that I'm more than willing to meet if there are issues that come up that warrant a meeting, rather than the standing nature of the meetings. And that goes for any of the...any or all the groups behind me. Schedule-wise, it may make more sense, like I said, to delegate some of that to my staff. I can assure you that if that was the case, it would be my executive staff, either my undersheriff and/or my chief deputy in charge of corrections, or patrol, or whatever the particular issue being addressed would be, but certainly I would make my best effort to try and attend some of those meetings. And I would continue to meet as long as I felt they were being productive, but understanding there's going to be a bit of a chasm between what these folks want and what I'm willing to do. For example, keeping ICE completely out of our jail, not turning over anyone to ICE. I'm just unwilling to do that. I can appreciate that that's what they want. I can appreciate that that's what they want, but I'm just unwilling to do that. So to the extent that there are things, specific concerns, that we can look at or specific things that maybe we could do better, that while we may be in compliance with the law, perhaps there are things that we could do better from their perspective, more than happy to meet with that, if that answers your question.
It does. I appreciate it. And it's obviously your prerogative to do whatever you think is best and what you want to do and what you want to have your executive team do in response to either the recommendations that have been made here today or in an attempt to delve deeper into understanding specific cases that have been generally referenced to find out more detail. But I, this is just my opinion now. I think it would probably go a long way, at least to maybe have a, you know, to kind of restart the conversation to... for you to offer, which I think you clearly have, and for the ACLU and others to take you up on the offer to have meetings and to talk about some of these issues. I know it's very difficult in a public setting like this to have a PowerPoint with several slides that have recommendations, you know, A through F, and then expect anyone to come up and give a yes or no answer. But I think this is an opportunity... I mean, we're having this meeting because it's statutorily required, but it doesn't mean that there can't be... it can't be used as a springboard to possibly improve the relationship, perhaps even enhance the level of trust. And I think you've been clear about some of the things that, from your personal perspective, your professional perspective, you may be very reluctant to consider. I think they've also equally been very clear about some of the things that, from a principled standpoint, from an ideological standpoint, is very important to them. And I think if some of the ground rules are set early enough, I don't think there's a reason why some of those potential meetings couldn't be productive. So I'll just offer that.
No, I don't disagree. I guess conversely, I do agree with you. And I did verify with my staff, we do not share any LPR data with ICE.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We do not share any LPR data with ICE.
License plate readers. Sucrez Natale.
That was given my question to you, so you've answered it. But so, just as clear for the audience that we don't share license plate reader information with ICE, is what you just said, right?
That's correct.
Is there a policy framework behind that, Sheriff Jones?
I'm not sure. When it was brought up, I thought in my mind that it was a violation of the law to share such databases with ICE in that context. I don't know if that's true, but that caused me to verify with our... with a staff member that would know that. And he verified that, at least insofar as that's concerned, we do not share LPR data with ICE. I don't know if the policy is that it's against the law or not. I just don't know as I stand here.
I don't either, but I was just going to ask you a question, so thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. As I said, I have... This is a public forum. We did turn in the cards. I will, because it is a little unusual. It's not a typical public hearing. So if there is a representative that would like two more minutes to come back up, if there's one representative from the organization, I'd be okay with that. And then, that will end the hearing.
Thank you so very much for allowing me to come back. In the rush, I forgot to make clear that there were two asks. One is that, as you know, the position of Inspector General has been vacant for a year. The announcement closed on October 4th. And we would like for you to consider including a member of the community in the selection committee. And then, the one other recommendation you've heard over and over again, of course, is the establishment of a sheriff civilian oversight committee. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the end of the public forum. Thank you very much, everybody, for being here. Not only do I appreciate you taking the time for being here, just as importantly, I appreciate the level of civility that we all engaged in this somewhat charged subject matter. Madam Clerk?
All you have left now would be CEO comments?
No comments.
And then the board comments.
There are comments. I know we have an adjournment in a bit. Are there any comments, board members? Ms. Frost? No?
No.
Okay. Then I will give my weekly update on the OIG. As was stated, the application process has closed. I believe last I had heard from the consultant, there were 13 applicants, which is a lot better than the first time around. Right now, we are whittling those down, working with the consultant to come up with a number, looking at who would be appropriate to interview. And we will have interviews shortly. So we are still on schedule. We will have an ICE, a OIG, ICE. We will have an OIG in place by the end of the year.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We're adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry.
Adjourned, yeah.
We are adjourned in a moment.
Got an adjournment.
I did say it.
Thank you. So yes, I have an adjournment this afternoon in honor of the late Dr. William H. Lee, who I know many of us knew and worked with over the years. Dr. William H. Lee, founder and publisher of the Sacramento Observer, passed away on Sunday, September 22nd, after a long illness. He was 83. A memorial service to honor his life and legacy was held on October 1st. Dr. Lee was preceded in death by his wife of 52 years, Catherine, who passed away in 2013. Dr. Lee was born in Austin, Texas, moved to Sacramento with his parents and brother in the early 1940s. He grew up in Del Paso Heights and was a graduate of Grant Union High School. Pacer forever. He attended Sacramento State University from 1953 to 1955 and went on to earn a BA degree in accounting from UC Berkeley in 1957. He was awarded an honorary PhD from Southeastern University in 1970. Dr. Lee's commitment to serve others kept him active in civic and educational circles. He was named alumnus of the year in 1993 by UC Berkeley's Black Alumni Association. In 1962, at the age of 26, Dr. Lee and two partners launched the Sacramento Observer, an African-American-owned weekly newspaper. And by 1965, Dr. Lee and Catherine became sole owners and started the Lee Publishing Company. The company grew during the 1970s and 80s to publishing at one point, six distinct publications in California and Nevada, including Los Angeles, San Francisco, Stockton, Solano County, Reno, Nevada, and Sacramento. Throughout the years, under Dr. Lee's leadership, the Observer has been a strong community leader and the catalyst for Sacramento Urban League and the Sacramento Area Black Law Caucus. It was named the nation's top black newspaper six times, earning many awards, including the coveted John B. Rustworm Trophy for Journalism Excellence, which is considered to be the Pulitzer Prize in African-American newspaper publishing. Dr. Lee's career of more than 50 years as the publisher of the Observer may be the longest tenure of any publisher in California. He took on local, state, and national leadership roles, earning him a reputation for quality and excellence in the publishing industry and as a recognized, successful business owner. Over the years, he has been honored by many groups and organizations for his long and dedicated community service and contributions. Dr. Lee is survived by sons William and Larry. Larry, who currently serves as the president and CEO of SACobserver.com, will take over leadership of the Observer. And just on a personal note, I had a chance to attend Dr. Lee's memorial service at St. Paul's last week along with hundreds of other people that knew and loved him. And you can tell just by the energy in the church that he is going to be sorely missed but never forgotten.
Thank you very much. He was a true gentleman, no question about it. And we will adjourn in the name of Dr. Lee.